All right, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna call to order the August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four Planning Board meeting. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I see Ann is missing, so I will appoint Mr. DeFrancesco to vote for Ann.
We've got nine voting members.
Fantastic.
Full house, so to speak.
Uh, first thing we have is the approval of minutes. Lynn, I'll give these to you, and I am looking for a motion to approve the minutes of August sec- seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
I haven't gone through those yet, so I started, uh...
You wanna wait till the next meeting?
Wait till the next meeting.
Sure, easy enough, we'll wait till the next meeting.
There's some, there's some grammatical mistakes there that, uh, some will probably gloss over.
Sure.
You know what it means anyway.
Absolutely, not a problem, we'll do them next meeting. Um, all right, regional impact determinations.
Again, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, there are none. I don't believe there are any in the file.
Fantastic, and discussion with town staff.
Chairman, members of the board, in your file, Mr. Chairman, you'll see that there's an extension request from, uh, the agent for Patriot Holdings LLC, Philstone Land Consultants, requesting an additional six-month extension to satisfy the precedent conditions. Uh, so they're asking for six months, uh, from today's date, or actually, I believe they're, they were conditionally approved back in September. Or, excuse me, their, their final date would be the fifth of September, yeah, eleventh September.
So you want six months from the fifth of September? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Okay, so...
The applicant's engineer is present, if there's any questions.
So that would be, uh...
October, November, December, January, February. February, so we can use the fourteenth, February fourteenth? That works? Yep, okay. So I am looking for a motion to grant a six-month extension to All-Purpose Luninary Business Park, uh, for Plainview Drive Tax Map, uh, fourteen dash seventeen, to February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second that, Mr. Chair.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative, your extension request has been granted. Thank you, sir. Mr. Trotty, or anything else, good?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, in your file, you'll see that there's a, uh, an extension request, uh, dated this aft-, uh, or actually, from yesterday, um, to Kelly regarding, uh, Torey Brothers paving at fifteen Rockingham Road. This was conditionally approved back on, uh, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, Eric is here this evening to answer any questions, and he's asking for an extension to the second Wednesday in October.
Mr. Mitchell, come on, come on up, would ya? How are ya?
Um, I'm okay.
Fantastic.
Better if I was getting more work done.
Wouldn't we all? So we're going on, I think, over a year now of continuations, uh, there are extensions, I should say. Do we have any idea what, what the status is of this project?
The, uh, these are conditions of approval.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, some, some work had to be done on the traffic, an additional traffic, uh, determination, which is not, uh, a lot of work.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of what this comes down to is that we, um, it's not that we pushed it aside, certainly the, the owners of the property have not, they didn't wanna push it aside. But we haven't been able to get the information all pulled together the way we should've. But, uh, we've been here several times looking for a, uh, two-month extension to, uh, get it done. I, I've always thought that we can get it done in the two months, but we never got it done in the two months that we're here for. Um, I do believe that we can get it done in the next two months and just be, just be done with it. Uh, there's not, it's not engineering work, um, I think there may be a SWIP study that needs to be done, but there's not, it's, it's not tedious work that needs to be done, it's just that we haven't gotten it done yet.
Okay, thank you. Um, did I see new sign go up over there?
What's that?
Did they put a new sign up over there?
Yes, I think they did.
Yeah, was that part of this site plan?
I don't believe, I don't know that it was on the site plan, that whether they went to the billing department for that or not.
Yeah, I'm just ma- wondering if, did they put up a sign and they're still not conditionally approved, and we have a year of, a year of, um, extensions here, so I'm just wondering where that stands.
Probably check with the billing inspector.
Fair question.
Yeah, if you could, Mike, if you could look into that, I'd really appreciate it. Um, and then, uh, Mr. Mitchell, if, if we could please work with your client here to, like I said, we're going over a year now, so if we could work, work on getting this completed with them, I'd appreciate it. Um, so I am looking for a motion, uh, to grant an extension to the Pitt, Pittory Site Plan Tax Map thirteen lot ninety-nine, uh, to October ninth of two thousand twenty-four.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Before, before the second, for, for discussion?
Yes, sir.
What, what happens if we don't? What, what?
I think...
Starts the process again.
Yeah, I think it just dies.
Or he'd end up...
What does that do to the applicant? So they have to reapply?
They'd have to re, I mean, the, the, a lot of the work will already have been done, I mean, so we know what the board would, would say, but I think the most significant thing is that any regulatory, uh, legal changes that have occurred would not be vested any longer.
Yeah, yeah.
There's probably been more done on it than not done on it, so it's probably very close anyway, so.
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I think the, the board could reasonably, at this point, say, "Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do this this last time, but don't expect another one."
Yeah, and, and I think that's kinda the, the direction we're heading in, um, with, with what we have in front of us here, like I said, we're over a year now, so...
I think, and I, and I think, the reason I ask is that at some point, data is data, but it gets, the whole project gets stale.
Yeah.
For lack of a better term, and then nobody can remember, whatever, your comments you made a year ago, you probably can't even hardly remember what, what you commented on. So, yeah, I, I would say that, um, if one person's opinion, if, if, if this project comes in for us again, I will vote no on an extension, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would agree with that as well, Mr. Mitchell. So, we have a motion?
I'll second that motion.
I have a second by Lynn, all, all in, do you have a question? You look like you had a question. All in favor? All in favor? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, also in your, uh, in your packet, you should see a notice of, uh, voluntary merger of parcels under RSA, uh, six seventy-four colon thirty-nine dash A. This is for the Burton governmental LLC location at, uh, up at the intersection of, uh, Wentworth Ave and Burton, or, excuse me, Burton and Wentworth. So, in your file, in the packet, you should see that, and again, it's a, uh, a voluntary merger, uh, it's a matter of the, the chair, uh, signing that, and we proceed with having it recorded.
Thank you, sir, and, uh, again, this isn't anything we have to vote on, it's just a merger, we're merging, uh, two lots into one, tax map fourteen lot forty-four dash twenty-one, um, which is...
Usually the board, uh, gives the chair the approval to sign it, that's how we've always done it in the past.
Yeah, I, I think from a regulatory standpoint, we do not need that, though. And I understand that, that may be how we do it, but we do not need it.
This is the first one I'm, I'm doing, but I mean, I think a consensus would, would probably, would probably be...
Sure, so I don't know that we need a motion, there's nothing to make a motion on, but would the board give a consensus for, uh, fifty-eight Wentworth Avenue and three Burton Drive, um, into tax map fourteen lot forty-four dash twenty-one in, into just fifty-eight Wentworth Avenue? So board good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, all right.
But I think, I think the, the planning department had, doesn't even have to bring that to us, I don't think.
No, I, I think realistically, I can just sign it up, sign it upstairs when I'm signing plans, so it's really more of just a...
Correct. Everybody's on the same page and knows what's happening.
Yeah, I think the board should know about it anyway.
It's not a bad idea.
Absolutely.
It's just like, uh, having a list of, uh, what plans have been signed this, this year.
Exactly.
So the board has an idea of what, uh, the...
Agreed.
Fair enough, so cool, we have a...
The public does also.
We have a, uh, we have a consensus, and we are moving on to old business. Um, we have a public hearing on an application for formal review of a site plan to construct a six thousand two hundred fifty square foot warehouse building with nineteen hundred sixty-five square feet of office space and associated site improvements at thirty-nine Rockingham Road, map thirteen lot sixty-five dash one. Zone C two, AK Investments LLC is the owner and applicant, continued from June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, um, and they are looking for continuance to the September eleventh meeting, so I will take a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative, and the thirty-nine Rockingham Road site plan has been moved to the September eleventh meeting. All right, other business, this is moving along quickly.
Yes.
This hasn't happened in a year. Uh, other business, uh, first one up, work session, site plan and subdivision amendments. Uh, Mike, I will let you start.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so, um, I think it's helpful to, um, just, uh, you know, kind of get, go back to, uh, first principles, and that is that the, the regulations, uh, that govern site plan approvals and subdivision approvals in, in New Hampshire are the Planning Board's own regulations, um, and so this is something that, you know, it doesn't have to go to town council or anything like that, it is, um, one of the Board's authorities to, to publish, uh, and update as needed its, its own regulations. Um, it is important to recognize that they can only be amended by a majority vote of the Board, not everybody who's present, but a majority vote of the Board, and that's just to ensure that, um, they truly are the Board's regulations, and that a majority is comfortable, uh, moving forward. The process requires, um, a public hearing, uh, that is noticed, uh, with ten days, uh, in, is noticed ten days in advance, in two public places, and then it is published in a newspaper of general circulation or posted prominently on the town's website, I would suggest that it's, it's easy enough for us to do both, uh, to make sure everybody's notified, um, and then we've, uh, included the proposed regulatory changes. We understand this is a, um, a, a discussion, um, I expect that there will be, uh, helpful input that will, um, result in changes to what we're proposing, um, but I, I want to, um, say a little bit about sort of why, what the, what the genesis of these changes is, and the process that's led us here. Um, so as we discussed, I think, uh, at the last meeting, you know, we hear regularly, there's a lot at stake, uh, when people are developing real estate, and when, and time is money, um, particularly in that, in that arena. And so we hear, uh, complaints all the time, John gets them, I get them, you get them, the Board, the Board hears them when people don't get approved, and you have to try to determine, you know, when is a developer stomping his feet, for lack of a better term, when he doesn't get what he wants, and when is there a, a complaint that, that is legitimate and says something about our process that could be improved? And I think that's the challenge, is trying to figure out, um, you know, whi- which of the two, or maybe it's a little bit of both. I think that, uh, you know, historically, the Board has been, uh, has been good, um, you know, ba- backing us up when, uh, it's apparent that it is somebody stomping their feet, and, uh, you know, John has regulations, the, the, the planning department have regulations, and they need to be enforced, um, but, you know, there, there, there needs to be an efficient process that works as well, and I should say that the council has been, um, uh, good backing me up, because when they go to me and they don't get the answer that they want, they tend to go to the town council next. Um, so it's a challenging environment for all of us to work, work in, um, I, I, a few of the things that I would say is, you know, it's, you don't, I can't put into words what it's like, you know, having twenty-five, thirty, sometimes forty projects under active review or approval, the number of phone calls and emails that generates, um, again, people expecting a very, very prompt response, and trying to juggle all of that, and the staff have, uh, have historically done just a commendable job, I believe, um, in a high-pressure environment, um, you know, na- navigating that kind of a situation. I've also said that I think there are, you know, if, if, if you take a set of regulations that is this complex, and a process that is this complex, and you say, "It's perfect, there's nothing that needs to change," you probably, I, I don't agree with that, I mean, I think, I think that whatever the process is, it, it can always be improved and, and changed, and we should have an open mind and be prepared to do that. We have, you know, I think that there has been, um, like the master plan, a lot of these things have not really been looked at, uh, regularly, because it's easy, in that pressure-cooker environment that I mentioned, it's easy to put things on the shelf that real, they're not, you know, they're not, they're, they're more long-range plant, uh, projects, and it's easy to just, you know, "I've got something on fire in front of me," and so, um, I think that we should, we should be willing to look, look at these things on a regular basis and make sure that any adjustments, uh, that need to be made are ma- are made. The other thing that I would underscore is, from, from my perspective, a lot of this has to do with communication and setting very clear, um, you know, often written parameters about what people should expect, and, um, and when they should expect it, and believe it or not, that is not a straightforward thing. And, like I said, this is a, an extremely complex process on a good day, and so, um, and, you know, people tend to hear what they want to hear, and so that, and there are a lot of different cooks in the kitchen, so it is a challenging environment to, to navigate, uh, to navigate. I will say that I am, um, much impressed with the cooperation, um, that I have received from the Planning Board, um, in the, in the recent months, uh, working towards improvements that I think everybody, uh, can agree, um, you know, may, may be required. Um, it's, it's something that you have, uh, prioritized, Mr. Chairman, it's something that I think has been embraced by other Board members, and so I'm looking forward to this discussion, um, I appreciate the input that the, you know, so, select Board members have already provided, uh, to get us to this point, and, um, you know, we, uh, I'm looking forward to getting this conversation started.
Thank you. Um, you know, so, I think as we all know, we, we've started, we've, we've got some minor changes here as a, a start to, to what we're looking at, um, I'd like, I'd love to hear the Board's input on it, um, I'm sure you all have had a, a chance now to look at the red lines and, and the additions and, and be able to digest it a little bit, um, you know, before I go, if, if there is anything else that the Board sees, or, you know, is there other things outside of what's on here that we're, we're looking to have updated now, now is that time to do it? Um, you know, and I think right now, we're at a point where we're, you know, looking for that additional feedback to make sure we're all on the same page before, uh, before we start to move this forward a little bit.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, before we get into the, into the meat and potatoes of the changes, I think it would be important for someone, um, to articulate, delineate, and for the record, talk about the process that we're, that we're gonna make changes to. In other words, an applicant has ten acres of land and wants to quote-unquote "develop" it, what, what is that process?
What does that process look like?
What does it look like?
Yep.
From, from that person's standpoint?
Yep.
Once we can all hear that and understand that, I think the changes that are gonna be made, or are suggesting to be made, will make more sense.
Mm-hmm.
Um, otherwise, you're changing something that you're, if you don't understand the complete...
Go right, yes.
Yeah, if you don't, if you don't understand the complete process, then you don't really understand what you're changing.
Yeah, and I think Mike or John could, could probably answer that fairly well for, for the Board.
And I think, Tony, you're absolutely right, I think the, and then on the flip side, though, so what are we trying to achieve?
Yes, absolutely.
So this is the process, my, A through Z?
And why, yes.
And why, and, and what is, where are people getting tripped up?
Yes.
And, and by doing changes to the regulation, is it gonna solve the, the issue?
Exactly, thank you.
Like Mike said earlier, or is it just somebody stomping their feet?
Right, thank you.
So I would advise not, not to do any knee-jerk reaction and to...
Well, it will also help this Board understand, or, or try to think ahead, what is the, if we do make that change, what's the unintended consequence?
Yep.
Of that?
Yep.
And if, and if you, if, if you guys, or the Chair, or whomever, wants to, wants to volunteer to, to, to go through that process step by step by step?
Yep.
So that we all hear it at the same time, at the same place, I, I think it's a great starting point.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm happy to do that, um, and, and with John's assistance, if, if that's what you want, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
And this'll take a few minutes, so I...
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for bearing with me.
Yep.
Um, so I think that, I mean, you know, projects differ, right? I mean, so a, a two-lot subdivision is gonna be a lot different than New Balance, but, um, I think the, the process is, is roughly the same, I mean, it may be more or less involved, but, you know, we, people tend to, uh, we tend to have first contact with people, you know, and if it's a, if it's a big project, like, like New Balance, that first co- point of contact might be me, if it's something that, um, is a little bit more like plain vanilla, it, it may well go to planning or engineering first, um, but we will take a series of, um, we, typically, we, we, we will take a series of informal meetings with people, um, who have an idea, they have a concept, and they want, they wanna know, "Can I do it here?", um, you know, and, and what's the, and they wanna know exactly what, what you said, Tony, "What's the process that I can expect?" So, um, oftentimes, that will involve the zoning administrator, because there may be a, a question about whether, he may need to characterize their use, because you can't specifically fit what they're doing into a use that's in our use table, and so he has to find the closest use and say, "Yes, that's permitted," or "No, that's not permitted," and maybe you need to go and see the ZBA. Um, but, you know, let's assume that the use is permitted, and, um, and that they just wanna kinda get, get started. It tends to be the case that we, we, we take that, you know, one or two early meetings, we, John will, I will, Kelly will sit with them, and, and provide just kind of candid, uh, off-the-cuff feedback. That's a really important meeting, and that, and we, and we encourage those meetings because we can be, we, we can be very candid with each other, and any, you know, you, you all know me fairly, fairly well, you know, when the cameras aren't on, I, I am fairly direct, and, and, you know, we'll, we'll kinda call it like I see it, John is, believe it or not, more direct than me, but that's really useful... So, but that's really, um, it's important that those meetings don't take place on camera, because people, we can provide, uh, the Board with, or we can provide the applicant with really, like, candid, um, feedback about what they can expect when they come down here, um, what they can expect, uh, from the various state agencies, and you just can't do that in a, in a formal setting.
I need to stop you there, please, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, just for the record, I don't want you to get in trouble, because you just stepped in a big one. It's not a secret meeting.
Correct.
There are no decisions being made...
That's right.
At that meeting.
That's right.
It's just a, a walk-in informational...
Yep.
"Hey, I got this land, what do you think I can do with it?"
Yep.
Kinda thing. There are no decis- there are no decisions being made.
There's no quorum of anybody, um, and, and there's no secrets, uh, I mean, in the past, we've had Planning Board members who, who, you know, were like, "What's up with these meetings?", and, uh, they said, "Can I attend?" "Sure, yeah, you, you can attend, any Planning Board member is, is, is welcome to attend", I think it's, it's, it would be a, a good education for people to, to see, because it really is valuable to be able to provide that feedback that is a little bit more candid than, than anything anybody would say down here, like, "Hey, you're gonna have a problem with this," or, "Hey, the Board's gonna have a problem with this." People wanna, people wanna know what the path of least resistance is, and if we can flag those issues up front, um, i- is beneficial to applicants.
And, and again, Tony, sometimes, very rarely will somebody come in and say, "What can I do to my property, on my property?"
Right, they've got a concept, yeah.
I say, "What do you, what do you wanna do with your property? I'm not here to tell you what you can do, I can, I'm here to advise you what you could do."
That's right.
I wanted, I wanted to get it on tape, that there were no decisions...
Thank you.
Being made in those meetings, where it's you, three or four or five people talking with a proposed applicant.
Yeah, and that, that happens in every town, that, that is gonna happen in every town, um, and the wheels of government just aren't gonna work if, and thank you for just un- underscoring that, it's not gonna work if, uh, if, if applicants can't talk to staff.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think most of those meetings come with a conceptual-type plan, right?
That's right.
Absolutely.
And, and they've already identified maybe some of the challenges they may have, so they're getting your opinion on...
Exactly.
You know?
Exactly.
How big of an issue is this gonna be?
That's, that's exactly right.
Exactly, and then, you know, you, traffic, you know what, so what is this gonna, you know, just looking at this, you're gonna fall into full traffic analysis...
Right.
Doing this, you know, and, and there are issues in town at that particular intersection.
Right, and John knows what's pending, John knows, "Oh, we've got, you know, uh, something going in here, we've got something there," and, and so you're at the tipping point, you know, "We're gonna need to look at this in terms of a traffic standpoint," so it's, being able to access that institutional knowledge that exists is, is kinda the first step. What I, what I wanna just put a pin in that for, as, as we kinda progress here along this, this, this process discussion, is just to just put a pin in it, every applicant has the right to, um, bring in a set of plans in an application and get on the Planning Board agenda within roughly thirty days. So, we advise against it, but if somebody thinks that they have just, they have engineered this thing to death, they have a perfect plan, um, they don't need to talk to John, they don't need to talk to, you know, Kelly or me, they can submit, um, and then, and go see the Planning Board at the, at the next meeting. Doesn't go very...
That's by state statute.
That's by state statute.
Statute, yeah.
Doesn't usually go well.
Yep.
But everybody has that right, and, um, it would be reviewed within that timeframe by our third-party engineer, we would review it once we got third-party comments back, and we would put it in front of you in whatever condition it, it's in, and we would do our best to, to help the applicant through that process, and to give you advice about whether that is something that you should approve or not. So I just want, and, and at any point in this process, whichever, um, procedure you are choosing, you know, before formal, you can go formal, so if you go into design review, um, and you're in design review for thirty days, and you get your comments back, and, you know, there, there are a bunch of comments, but you think that, "Hey, I've addressed these to the point where I'm ready to go and see the Board," you go and see the Board. The staff doesn't control when, when people get to go and see the Board, and that is the case throughout the process until you, until you get to the formal, um, submission.
I always, I...
It used to be that way twenty, thirty years ago, and, uh, there were a lot of continuances.
Yep.
We didn't even have a checklist then, they didn't have things all together, and sometimes it was...
Two and three o'clock in the morning, too.
So it'd get continued.
That's right.
And it's just like we've, uh, we haven't seen recently, but plans would be continued four or five times until they got it right.
That's right, that's right.
So we, uh, updated our regulations, I think around, uh, two thousand, two thousand and one.
Yep, correct.
You and Yannis worked on them, uh, with the Board, we had, I know, a good six weeks worth of meetings.
They were revised just before I got here.
Um, that's exactly right, and, and a lot of the process that we have now is to avoid exactly that, which is these, these meetings...
That's the ten of the current regulations, is to avoid that.
Correct.
And to at least have the engineers do their work first, or the applicant do their work first before it comes to the Board, if the Board used to do a fair amount of engineering, till we got smart enough to figure out why, you know, we should be doing the engineering and not getting paid for it.
That's right, and let's, I mean, let's put everything...
Public service, you know?
It's a, it's a great point that you, you raised, Mr. Vice Chair, let's put everything on the table here, because I think that that's the, everybody wants to understand, like, where this is coming from and where we've been. None of, none of, so these are my regs, none of this is really required, uh, we could do everything down here by the seat of our pants, and developers are, you know, may, may not think that they're happy now with the extensive checklist and, you know, dealing And developers are, you know, may, may not think that they're happy now with the extensive checklist and, you know, dealing with John. But the, the op-, you know, the opposite is you just come down and see the board and we hash it all out down here until, you know, we, we go home.
3:00 AM in the morning.
Yeah, so if the board wants, you know, it's the board's jurisdiction. The board has the, has, it's the board's jurisdiction. We don't have jurisdiction. That, that is an option, but I don't, I don't advise it for the reasons that we'll talk about.
So the takeaway so far is that the applicant has, has, has an opportunity to speak to staff or not?
Correct.
And, and the staff, should they choose that direction, is there to help guide the applicant through the process?
That's correct.
What we can do is give them three options. When we, once we had the checklist, the checklist is not complete, we can say, you know, deny the plan.
Yep.
Because the checklist is not complete, they can go, go home, start all over again. The second thing is to go into design review and work with staff.
Yep.
The third thing is to complete all the checklist items and then come in.
Correct.
So they basically have three, three choices. Usually they, I know they, someone will go into design review right then and there where they can really communicate with staff.
That's exactly right, and that's a good lead into kind of the next point that I would make, which is after these initial meetings, which I can't really put them in, they're not part of design review, they're not part of a conceptual review before the board, they're just really before you get to, before you have a, an application, really, it's just informal discussion.
So this is, this is a time where there is no application submitted to.
Correct.
To the town staff.
That's.
No application out there.
That's a good point.
Whether it be application for designer, there's two applications, design review or formal review, correct?
Uh, and I would say that there is an applica-, there isn't an application, as I understand it, for conceptual review, but it, the, the regulations envision the submission of something.
Yeah.
To look at.
Yeah.
That's exa-, and that's a good point, Mr. Chair. So at this point, you know, they can choose design review, most do if the project is of any complexity. They can choose conceptual, and they can choose formal, formal review. We, we do, conceptual, I would say is, you know, you, you, you sometimes, I can't remember the last plan that came here conceptually.
Tesla.
Tesla?
Tesla came here, they didn't have anything, they just had some cartoon drawings and said, this is what we're thinking of doing.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think that, and as I recall, there was a variance or a rezo-, was rezoning that was required for Tesla? There was a variance that was required for Tesla.
They needed something, yeah, they needed something else, but.
So, you know, conceptual is helpful, but it's, it's a super informal process, and it's really just to get the board's temperature about, do you, do you like this idea or not? I think, I think Technology Hill came conceptually.
Really just discussion back and forth to see what, what they want, what we can do, do for them. And in fact, the attorney for the municipal association recommends every town and city acquire it because we do have the statute that we can implement it. So it's something to think about. So if everyone came in for conceptual, you know, those that didn't need to, if it's a fairly easy plan, they don't need to go through it, but something that has some degree of complexity, you could really hash things out at the, you know, during the discussion. And at least have some, some direction so that the, you know, the applicant has, you know, a way to pursue it, you know, what, what they want.
I think that's a good point, Mr. Vice Chair, and I.
This discussion knows advisory, though, too.
Correct, so I.
Heritage condos had conceptual as well.
That's true.
So I think that the, the way that I would, you know, as we're talking this through, the way that I would, I would characterize conceptual is, it's, it's kind of like the board version of what we do in these informal early meetings with staff. You have to submit something, but it's really just so that we have something to look at and, and the board can make an informed decision. More frequently, what happens is the, the complex projects enter design review, and that requires an application, it requires an application fee, it requires a completed checklist that should include all of the items that, that are required for, for this review to take place. And it is disseminated to a, a group of officials, departments, the third-party reviewer, and, and boards and commissions. So it goes to assessing, building, fire, planning and economic development, police, DPW, tax collector, ZBA, conservation commission, heritage commission, and as I said, the, the third-party reviewer. Some or all of these may not apply, so it's, they don't have to go to ZBA if they don't need a variance. But the package is going to these folks and they will provide any comment that they might have. So for example, if there's a, if there is a project, you know, ta-, take, take fire, for instance. You know, fire isn't going to comment on every plan necessarily, but if there is an issue with water pressure in a certain location or there's hydrants that, you know, are, are not in the right place, they'll, they'll, they'll flag that. And so the idea is that, and, and the, the regulations currently require that the first round of comments from the town are returned within, to the applicant within 30 calendar days of the submittal date of the complete design review application, including all the items specified. So let's, let's, let's pause here to just talk about what complete means for a second because frequently, we will get things dropped off, and it's always at like 4:50 on a, on, you know, whatever the date is. But they get, things get dropped off, they don't have the right number of copies. They don't have the, you know, the, what else, the permits. They don't have, they, stuff is.
Drainage report.
The drainage report.
They forgot it.
Like, and so, the drainage report, as we know from like.
They actually forgot to do the whole thing.
Like, that's really important, like the drainage report is, is really important. So we, we, we get in the situation where like, these engineers who are getting paid by the hour are submitting things that are, that are not complete.
And, and, sorry, so the, and the things.
Yep.
Are checklist items?
Co- co- correct.
So, so they have, so there is, for lack of a better term, a sheet of paper.
Yep.
Or something.
Yep.
Multiple sheets with items that they can do it and check it off, then the next thing, check it off.
Yep.
Either, either it's all checked off or it isn't.
Mm-hmm, correct. And, and that's.
Sounds pretty simple.
It sounds, it sounds simple, but it, in practice, it, it doesn't work out that way all the time.
There are, there are some things like you can't, PSNH doesn't always.
You don't have a clearance level, right, that's fine.
Doesn't always cooperate and the water company doesn't all, I mean, those are, those are things that everybody understands.
Correct, but let me, let me, let me, and it's a good, I'm, thank you for pausing, because there's two points that I want to make. It seems simple, but one, one of the things that happens, all, we require, how many copies, paper copies do we require, two?
Two.
Two. We require two paper copies to be submitted, and we require an electronic file to be submitted that we, we send to the reviewer. Okay, the, I can't do, I can't look at a plan on a computer, you know, and I, I think there are a lot of people like that. Certainly, our third-party reviewer is entitled to a cop-, a paper copy to review and mark up. I can't tell you how many times we get a submission that does not include the right number of copies of everything because we have to maintain one for the file, and here's the other thing that happens. At 4:50, when they leave here, and, you know, they, here's my application, they call their client and they say, it's submitted. And the client marks on his calendar, okay, 30 days has started, and time runs from that date. You, it doesn't matter how many times you, you say it.
In, in their mind.
Correct, but we don't have a complete application, and.
Complete fee.
We don't have a, and that's the other thing that happens is, they get, at 4:50, it gets submitted and they haven't provided escrow, or they haven't paid. Okay, we're not going to start, we're not going to send it to STANTEC until we have the money to pay STANTEC because the taxpayer shouldn't be, shouldn't be funding that.
When you, when you determine the fee?
Once it, uh, a lot, it depends, John. So sometimes people will wait till the, the plans have been submitted.
And will then provide it, whether it will, yeah.
Then we can establish what the escrow would be. Some people are proactive and they'll say, here's, here's a preliminary, can we know what the fee is? That way we, when we drop off the plans, we can provide the fee. Some of the bigger projects, some of the bigger boys, they understand it, and that's when we'll get the, the fee right up front.
So, so, so we're, we're in design review, and, you know, and I'm not going to say every project is like that, but, you know, a, a not insignificant percentage of projects are like that, and it, it's not causing weeks of delay, but it's a day or two here or there, and remember, we're on this like, it, it's a compressed timeframe already because projects of significant size and complexity, for third-party to review everything, including the drain, you know, what, I, I think Technology Hill was a 600-page drainage report.
Yep.
For third-party to review everything, get us the comments, and for us to wrap our heads around the comments and make sure that they, they actually make sense, within 30 days, we're moving very quickly already. And so a day or two here or there, it may not seem like a lot, but it really slows things down.
So let's go, let's, you said 30 days a bunch of times.
Yep.
We know when the 30 days didn't start because it was 10 minutes of five or whatever, and there was stuff missing. When does the 30 days actually start as far as you all are concerned or the town is concerned?
It's when we have the.
The escrow.
The, it's when we have the escrow, it's when we have the right number of copies of everything, and, and it, now, yeah, so that, that's the answer. Now, you can, you can submit something that, you know, ultimately, it's the, if and when these things get to the board, it's the board's decision to say, we have enough information to accept this as complete, to accept jurisdiction and move forward. And so you, you know, like, like you said.
I'm sorry, so then it's the planning board that decides when the 30 days starts?
No, no, let me, let me back up a second and just make sure that.
This is where it gets, I'm, I'm asking the, I know the answer.
Yeah.
But I'm, but I want to get it out there.
Yeah, thank you, Tony. So, so we're in design review, and again, you, you're, if you're only in design review because you want to be in design review, all right? A 30-day clock starts from when we have a, a complete design review application, including all the specified items. That's the language that's in the regs. The 30-day timeframe to provide the initial round of comments to the applicant begins to run. And what happens is, it goes to all these different boards and committees, third-party reviews it, we review it, and we send the comments back, hopefully, within 30 days.
Do you use a date stamp?
Yes, we date stamp everything that comes in.
The problem being, though, again, Tony, so they, they submitted it on Thursday, we didn't get the check till two Thursdays from then. So we're going to be careful when the dates, you know.
Right.
So again, once.
But you all, you all are date stamping. You are the ones that date stamp.
When it's, when it's received, absolutely.
Yeah, but, but it does, it does create a problem when things come in piecemeal is to, it just becomes, it, it becomes messy.
Question for you, to me, you want to go?
No, go.
To, I guess to me, if I'm looking at it, and maybe I'm wrong, but it, it almost sounds like we need more of a review of what they're submitting at that time, you know, and, and if it's not, if it's not complete, they don't leave stuff here, you go.
Correct.
Here's all your stuff back.
Exactly.
You're not complete.
Exactly, and we're not going to spend a lot of time.
Correct.
Helping you to understand why it's not complete. It's not complete, again, you're being paid by the hour, you know, and, and, and this is, this is not hard. We're not at the difficult stage of the, of the proceedings.
Yeah.
And, and to be fair, if I go to the town clerk's office to register my car, if I don't have all the paperwork.
They go like this.
Goodbye, yeah. So this is.
They, they say it with a smile, and it's, it's a great.
And I don't want to overstate the, the, I don't want to overstate, this is something that we see over and over again, and it's annoying and it slows us, and it creates unnecessary work when we're already taxed, and we can talk about that more as we go forward tonight. We're already taxed, and, and we're losing a day or two here or there. And as we get into later stages of this process, when we're trying to meet a statutory planning board deadline, that can, that can be a problem.
So let me ask you a question, is there, does the applicant get notice that the clock starts on this date because?
Not currently, and, but that's one of the proposed changes because for that reason and for the reason that you, you raised, Mr. Chair, I think we can be clearer about, well, I think we can, we, I think we need to be clear about when the clock starts running and what will happen to alert you to the fact that it is under review and what the deadline is. That needs to be made clear, I agree.
And I think, again, just going to differentiate, though, too, between design review and formal.
And formal, because, so in a formal review, if they don't have everything, they just don't have everything.
Back to them and send them home.
Right.
So right now.
But you can't do that technically at a formal review.
Correct.
By state statute.
Correct.
They can come in with a, a napkin.
And I think.
And submit it and.
And it has to come here, correct.
Yeah.
But I think, I want to try to not jump back and forth between formal and.
Yeah, because that'll get very confusing.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're in design review, the 30-day clock is ticking, we provide the comments after it's gone through this whole review, and, and usually there's a lot because our regulations are complex, our reviewer is very, very thorough. Some people say they're too thorough, I, you know, I, I like to hear, you know, John, I think, has a different opinion, I, I, but they're, they're not making stuff up, okay, so, you know, that's a separate conversation. They get a set of comments back, it's five, 10 pages long, some of them are little comments, like you need to mark this pipe and, you know, use a different label for a pipe than you've, maybe you've used, what was it, like S? And you've, you need to say SD or some, easy, easy stuff. Some of them are, are complex, like you haven't demonstrated that your project isn't producing more runoff post-development than is, is the case now. And, and, and some of the comments flag things like, you haven't complied with this section of the regulation that requires this analysis. So, and as I said, an applicant can decide to go formal at that point. Usually what we see and what we recommend is, address the comments, submit them back to us to, to make sure that we agree that they've been addressed. And one of the constant complaints that we get is, you've, and we will, and we will do the same thing. We will, we will review it, we don't send it out to every, every design review, every, everybody listed. If there is a, if it, if there's something that affects that, those agencies or commissions or officials, it will go back to them. But we will, we will look to make sure that the comments have been resolved, and we will provide another memo after, you know, typically it goes back out for engineering review, not always, and we'll provide another memo, or sometimes an email as we get to the later stages of, of this process that says, hey, you've, you've addressed, we're satisfied you've addressed this, or you haven't addressed this. With regard to the thing, you know, things that have been like dropped or just overlooked, or we didn't get the first time around, but, but they're then re- addressed and resubmitted, yes, that sometimes triggers additional comments that you don't see in the first memo because the, the analysis wasn't provided, or, or the element wasn't, wasn't designed. And so, yeah, we're going to look at that and we're going to comment on it, and maybe there's some comments that weren't in that first memo. The, the, that feels to applicants like we're taking a second bite at the apple. And John and I both agree that, look, third-party and the town have, have an opportunity to thoroughly review this application the first time around. If there's something that is not attributable to an omission or a mistake of the applicant, we should not be taking a second bite at the apple when we re-review on resubmission. But I, but I flag that because that is, that is a complaint that we sometimes hear. There is no deadline in the regulations to address how long a resubmission takes to be reviewed. And I think the reason for that is that not all resubmissions are created equal. You have your, you know.
One, one resubmission might have one question.
Correct.
Another resubmission has 45.
Correct, and particularly as you get to later stages of the, of the review, at the end, you have very few comments left, and that may take two days. But an earlier resubmission where you're, you know, addressing significant comments and maybe redesigning things or re-analyzing things, it's, it's, it's taking, you know, I think it could take 30, 30 days. But, but, but people have it in their mind that it's always going to be 30 days, it's always going to be 30 days, and, you know, that, the, part of the, the proposals that we have put in front of you, I would ask for some recognition that, for instance, if Technology Hill came in as a single application, infrastructure, retail, childcare, the whole shebang, we can't review and approve that in 30 days, but that's what our regs say. So what the regs don't do right now is recognize that all, not all projects are created equal.
Let's say a project went really well, and, you know, we changed the regulations. There's nothing saying you can't have that done in 30 days, it's just giving you more time to get it done, you know?
That, that's correct, and, and that's exactly right. And one of the questions was, we, you know, we were proposing to increase the time of review to account for some of these factors, but to have a sliding scale that will, will, based on the complexity, will say, yeah, we'll do this within, you know, 45 days or we'll do this within 65 days, and the question is always going to be, well, you're just going to default to 65 days. But believe, believe it or not, we want these things off our desks as, as quickly as responsibly possible as well. So that we can move on to other things.
Yeah, similarly, that's what we do with our projects is, depending on the complexity, you know, 15 days to 90 days type thing, and it's all based off our checklist, you know, and such like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, this is.
Question, question for you on, back to the 30 days. Correct me if I'm wrong, our third-party review company has 30 days to review the plan.
That's what the contract says right now, I believe.
So, could that in and of itself create a bit of an issue because we give ourselves 30 days to review the plan? So we might not even see the plan until day 30.
That's right.
And then, you know what I mean? It's almost, we both have the same deadline.
Correct.
You might not get it, maybe you'll get it in 10 days, but.
I think that's a really good point, and I, I'll ask John to kind of speak to it. My sense is that we tend to get the, by practice, we tend to get the, the third-party comments a little bit in advance of the 30 days. But the other, but the other thing I should, I should just acknowledge, and everybody needs to hear this, we're not always able to meet the 30 days right now under existing practice. You would acknowledge that, right? And so I, I don't want to, I don't want to misrepresent that.
We're not always able to meet the third-party's 30 days.
The town isn't always able to meet the statutory, or the regulatory requirement that we provide the initial round of design review comments within 30 days.
And that's where we end up in these meetings where people say, we just got. And that's where we end up in these meetings where people say we just got comments.
Correct.
You know, this morning.
Exactly, exactly.
And I, I think that's where some of the, you know, personally, I think sixty-five, it's forty-five to sixty-five, right?
I think that's what, yeah, that, so that is what we, correct.
Personally, I think sixty-five is a very long time. I, I like the number forty-five because I'm looking at it as a worst case of when we don't get our design review back, you know, our third-party review company takes all thirty days that they're entitled to per contract to review it. That gives town staff fifteen days, which is three weeks, which is a long time to, to be able to review them.
That's a, that's a good point.
It's calendar day though, calendar days.
It's calendar days.
Fifteen days is two weeks. It's not business.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. I see what you're saying, I, I'm seeing it as business days, yeah, I'm seeing it as business days.
So can, so, sorry, can we, can we go, continue to go through the whole process?
Yeah.
And then circle back around with the changes and what we like and what we don't like?
Yeah.
Just, just so that we don't get bogged down.
So, 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 thank you, so we're in, we're in, we're in, we're in design review still, it is a, there's no statutory deadline that's running, people are hopefully having a constructive dialogue back and forth with, with town staff as this is going, as this is going forward. There are, you know, you, you're a big fan of the, you know, let's get on the phone or let's get in the room and, and talk about these things, that takes time.
Come and talk to us, and every, every review comment letter says, schedule a meeting to come talk to staff before you start going down the wrong path.
That, that happens a lot.
It happens a lot, because again, number one, they first started with no engineering standards. Then they, they, then they keep saying, well, in accordance with the town's standards, well, if you didn't know the standards before, how do you know them now, and how, so what did you change to try to address it, you know?
Right, or, or people misunderstand the comment.
Yeah.
Or they don't fully understand the comment, and so then they, they go down a rabbit hole, and so we always encourage that.
A common, a common high school project.
Yep.
Problem that students learn before they leave town. That was an unbelievable presentation. First rate, you would've got an A if you answered the question.
If that had been the assignment, yeah.
That was, but that was not it.
Yeah.
You, you, you took a right-hand turn.
Yep.
And you should've taken a left-hand turn, and that's a, that's a classic, it's, it's classic.
So.
Actually, it happens in undergraduate school too.
And that's what generates a lot of complaints though, too, Tony, cuz then again, the, the applicant gets an invoice for the engineer services, he says, what the heck are you doing, Mike? You know what you're doing?
Yep.
It's the town.
Yep.
It's trawdier.
Right, right.
That's exactly what happens.
And, that's right, and, and, and you are the proverbial bad guy.
Yeah.
I will say this, I mean, and it's no secret, I, I lean on John to be more flexible when I think it's appropriate, but John is, is in the unenviable position of having to tell people no. And, and, you know, most of the time when John does that, I think he's justified.
It's your favorite word, isn't it?
So, so we're, we're in design review, you know, again, it depends on what the project is, how many rounds of design review you're gonna go through, and, and as a reminder, you don't have to go to design review. Eventually, it reaches the point where the, the applicant gets sick of design review and goes formal, or we tell the applicant, we think this is ready for prime time, and the idea is then they should be able to, to submit a formal application, come down here and get their approval in one meeting, if there isn't an issue. We.
Coming down here is the planning board.
Yeah, to see the board, so.
You're now, you're now ready to present in front of the planning board.
Right, right, or there, or, you know, it's reached the point where, where staff has, has reviewed this thing to the point where, where we're comfortable with it, maybe there's a, a disagreement on a certain point, or there's something that, like, you interpret this differently than we do. We're not gonna argue with each other, we're gonna let the planning board decide. And so, that, that, you know, it's, it's not that all disagreements have been resolved, but it's just we've, we've reviewed the thing to the point where it, it's ready to come down here. The, the, there are applicants who, against our advice, go straight to formal submission. And I think, I think New Balance did that, I think New Balance went straight to formal submission.
On the subdivision.
He went through design review, there was a big one, there was a big one recently that.
Didn't, wasn't New Balance formal on the subdivision?
It was formal on the subdivision, that's exactly right.
Yeah.
And, you know.
Did that right away.
Because there was a, there was a, a high-quality engineer there, New Balance was approved in like record time, I think it was like four months, because we didn't have a lot of this back and, you know, these stupid mistakes, for lack of a better term, that eat, eat up everybody's time and money. Not all engineers are created equal, so just because you go formal without going to design review doesn't mean that your project is gonna proceed any less quickly or, or get any less favorable treatment from the town. Everybody has that option, but once you do go formal, and I think we've exhausted the discussion about what the design review process looks like at this point, do you agree?
I think so.
That's roughly the process, you, you stay in it until you're ready to, to leave, and, and nobody has to go there if they don't want to. If you are going formal out of design review, or if you go formal, the process is the same. You have a, a deadline that you have to submit material. The, let's, let's pull these deadlines up, because this is important. So, to get on today's meeting, which is August fourteenth, you would've had to submit your materials, and, and disregard the labels on this because your, your newly adopted rules of procedure allow you to look at new plans in your, in the second meeting of the month. But in order to get on the agenda for, for a, a formal review for tonight, you would've had to submit your package on July twenty-fifth. I'm not good at math.
Is that twenty-one days?
But that's, that's twenty-one days, now what has, what has to happen within that twenty-one day period? Well, if you went to design review and you're ready for prime time, not much, because it's already been reviewed and we already know what, what staff is gonna say about it. But if you haven't done that, or if there are significant things that need to be resolved or addressed, or you just haven't done that good of a job, then there is a significant process that needs to take place between July twenty-fifth and August fourteenth. It is sent out to, and this is where a day or two really matters, because it goes out to third-party. We, we typically get the comments back Friday afternoon before the meeting.
Mike, question for you. On, I go through design review. Everything looks good, staff is comfortable, the applicant's comfortable, you say, let's submit for final review. Or, or, yeah, let's submit for final review with the, with the planning board.
Yep.
You've been through design review, say you had, you had a round of, of design review comments, those got answered, then they went back out, you've answered those, staff says, I love it.
Yep.
That goes to review again, to the third-party reviewer again?
Not to, I've, I've advised people, you know what?
You're all set.
Don't touch these plans.
Yeah.
Okay.
Leave these comments as is, do not touch the plan, don't have Jake touch the plan because Jake's gonna touch the plan in the resubmit, something's gonna be screwball, so just, just submit from what you have, your comments that night will be those.
So there's the ability to submit for formal review of the planning board, and you can say, I don't need another review from STANTEC.
I would, I would recommend it to people, I have.
If, if, if appropriate.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, the, the engineering review could take place internally, if it's, if it's, if it's been reviewed and it's in really good shape.
Yeah, I, I guess that's what I'm getting at, is, you know, formal review. If this thing has been vetted twice and, and STANTEC or HTA says this looks great, we're not sending it to them again to review it again, essentially it costs more money.
Exactly.
Is, is what I'm getting at.
Exactly, yeah, no, we're on, we're on the same page, I mean, it's not, we're not sending it out unnecessarily just to get rereviewed.
If they do, if they're a good firm, they have their act together, and they have a dozen comments, they may take the opportunity to, to try to address those comments, that way when they come down here, they only have three comments, it just puts them that much closer to getting their plan signed after conditional approval. If you fault me, right?
Yeah, no, I understand that.
So, so, again, we're, we're, we're now in formal review, we have statutory deadlines that are running, and you, and to get on tonight's agenda, we would've received the comments back from third-party on Friday. On Friday, the, the ninth, so essentially, third-party had one, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven business days to review whatever was submitted. And then staff has.
Two days.
Two days, two business days to figure out, is third-party being reasonable? To make sure that we understand the third-party comments so that we can, we can speak to them, because as you always say, they're the town's comments.
That's right.
And this is why this part of, it, it would be easy to just say, okay, we got the, we got the STANTEC memo back on Friday, zip it off to the board, zip it off to the applicant, and let everybody kinda fight it out on Wednesday. But what happens is, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know if I've ever seen this happen in my time with the town, when we get the STANTEC comments or the third-party comments, we're not adding comments to the comments that they've provided. Oftentimes, we're deleting comments, because John, John, you know, has had a conversation with somebody, and don't worry about that, that one's all set, or.
We'll handle it under final engineering review.
Correct, so it only benefits the applicant that we're taking this day or two to put eyes on this memo. One, to make sure that we can speak to it and meaningfully assist the applicant, but two, that we're, we're striking comments that are unnecessary or, you know, don't need to be addressed. The memo, the planning board memo, which, you know, as we've discussed, is not required by statute or regulation right now, we are proposing that it, we add it to be a requirement in the regulation, is generated in that timeframe. And the other thing that, I guess the last thing that I'll say about formal review is that what is happening during this timeframe is we're getting calls from everybody who's on the agenda. We're trying to coordinate our schedules, which, you know, we try to keep open as much as we can for those two days before the meeting, but that's to the detriment of people who have applications that are not on for the, you know, the, the, the planning board agenda, who still expect to hear from us and will call me or the town council if they don't hear her back from us in a reasonable timeframe. All of that is going on. Let's talk about, so that's, that's formal review. And I, I can speak to the, the, the proposed changes a, as you wish, but I, I think the last thing that we just need to talk about for a second is staffing. The assistant engineering director position has been vacant for two years, the town planner position has been vacant. Municipalities across the state are, and probably the country are suffering from staffing shortages. We, we are, we are not able to be competitive with private sector compensation and flexibility in the, in the public sector. And we're, we're, I think we're gonna be able to chip away at that because we're renegotiating two of these CBAs over the next several months that affect the, those positions. But, and, and, and let's talk about what, what it means to be in the public sector today, because we all, we all see it and we all are affected by it. You have to have a certain level of, you know, thick skin in order to be in this environment. It is not for the faint of heart, and so that does, people do self-select out of this applicant pool for the, for these positions. So, so, we are lean, we are, we are mean, I think we do a pretty good job with the resources that we have, but those resources are not boundless, and I think the board, the board recognizes that, and, and I, and has explicitly acknowledged that and, and supported us in that. We can't be all things to all people, we can't do everything at once, but that, that's a factor here. So, that's, I think, the, the process, I'm happy to speak to, any, any questions that John would be happy to as well. We can kinda get into the, the reg changes one by one, or I'm happy to, you know, take it how, how you want, Mr. Chair.
So thank you very much for doing that, I think, and thank you for the board sitting through it all, but I think it's gonna make much more sense what we're about to do now, and now that we've all heard at the same time the full explanation of what goes on, how it goes on, when it goes on, and now I think we're ready to.
It was a good suggestion.
So, so thank you very much for that.
But I still, in my mind though, Tony, I still, I'm still perplexed of what the complaints are, what you're trying to achieve. That's, I'm just gonna say it and.
So I think some of that will come out as we go through the, the individual things.
Yep.
And, yeah.
Thank you.
And Mike, just a couple of points of clarification, on the timelines, the thirty-day timeline during design review, that's per our regulation and not per statute.
Correct.
Right, and then the thirty days after formal submittal is per statute?
Correct, and it doesn't work out to quite thirty, I don't think, but, but whatever that statutory, whatever this deadline is, yes.
But that is statutory, and what's the penalty if you miss the, I mean, does, does, do the statutes provide any remedies to the applicant if we miss the thirty days?
I don't know the answer to that offhand.
I don't think there is.
I think.
I don't think there is.
You're saying we missed the deadline for, you're saying they missed the thirty-day deadline for formal review. Formal review is technically twenty-one days, isn't it?
Correct.
So formal review by statute is twenty-one days or the meeting or the first planning board meeting after the twenty-one day.
I think you've got it right.
Is, is what the statute is. To review an application to accept it as either complete or non-complete, not complete. It's twenty-one days or the, or in our case, the Wednesday planning board meeting after that twenty-one days.
And then the applicant has a decision to make, the applicant's either gonna be a little more patient or they're gonna decide to take the town to court.
And I believe there is a, there is a, there is recourse to the town council if the planning board just won't do anything.
Correct, so if we were to not meet that deadline, the applicant has the ability to go to the town council and say, the deadline hasn't been met, and I believe from there, I'm getting a little fuzzy, but from, from there, I believe it is, the council has to ask, ask the planning board to act on it.
The thirty days, if we don't do, the thirty days is per our regulations.
Correct.
So we're shooting ourselves in the foot if we don't do that, right? I mean, we're just violating our, violating our own rules.
Yeah.
Really, the twenty-one days, we're violating state law.
We're violating the law, yeah.
So, it adds a whole different set of ramifications.
I, I would agree with that.
And we can control the thirty days, we can't control the twenty-one days.
I think the only remedy is for the applicant to go to court to.
Which would take six months.
Right, and the, and the way that I think about formal is, and, and about, I think the way to think about this is, look, you have a, once the board accepts the application is complete, which just means that there's enough information for the board to have an informed decision, discussion about the application, the sixty-five day clock starts running. If, if it's complete, in that they've provided everything that they needed to provide under the checklist, it doesn't mean it's a, it's a well-engineered plan. The board has to do something within sixty-five days, I sometimes wonder whether they're, they're, the, I think the, the, the trump card that the board holds is, this isn't, we've accepted it as complete, but it, we're not ready to accept it, it's denied. And the board always has that option, and so, I think the, the, the developers would like you to believe that you have sixty-five days to sign on the dotted line, but that's not the case.
You have sixty-five days to say yes or no.
Correct.
To make the decision.
So. Is complete doesn't mean it's okay.
Correct.
Right.
Complete just means the checklist item is done.
Correct.
Basically, right?
Yep.
Yep.
So.
So again, it could be the worst plan, but they've, they've have.
They checked all the boxes.
A drainage report for Raymond, New Hampshire. And the details for Milford, New Hampshire.
Right, which, believe it or not, you do see.
I do.
Lynn, did you have any more clarification-type comments, did you have anything else more for clarification?
No, no, I just wanna make sure we all understand the difference between our regulations and.
That's a good point.
I think, I think one thing that you always, so when a developer and, and the engineers come in, they say, well, you got thirty days to look at this, well, I think what's happened though, too, is that they've, that, that timeline has been compressed, so they, they haven't done the work, and then the, the guy that's paying them is beating on them, I need my approval by December.
Right.
So, of course, that's, so they, they, they submit half-baked plans, but you gotta give them their comments in thirty days. So, that's where, again, on that.
I can think of one plan.
How about we start at page one?
So, I'd like to, yeah, I'd, I'd like, I'm gonna go. Yeah, I'd, I'd like, I'm going to go through the board on this one, one by one, see what anybody's comments are, where we stand right now. So Giovanni, I'll start with you.
On what? The whole thing or?
Just everything we've discussed now. Any comments you have based off of what you heard, based off of any of the adjustments?
Is that the process gets delayed in the, I'll talk to you guys about this, but in the third-party reviews.
Yeah.
So what I've heard from applicants, you're saying differently. But that, you know, that first review is understandable. It takes a considerable amount of time. Second, so they address it, the engineer addresses it, the applicant addresses it, comes back to the town, they send it back out. What I've heard is that things are unrelated, like if you, if you had like a, well, the road design is, is incomplete. You got to fix that. The second review, it's, it's, it's appropriate to say, okay, you fixed the road design, but you screwed up the slopes or something to that effect. What I hear often is that new comments come back unrelated to the first comments. And we can argue over whether or not they're accurate or, or what, but I've heard that. And I, so where these project, where the applicant gets frustrated is in that stage of, all right, I fixed it, now I got to wait another third days. If we change it forty to forty-five days, it's going to be even more frustrating. If we change it sixty-five days, it's going to be forever. But I do think, I mean, there's validity to sending it out to re-review what they've changed. But I think we've got to keep it consistent with what was coming back on the first review. Additionally, I think if that is consistent, then maybe that second review and third review, or even fourth review, should have timelines in which to complete it that aren't at that thirty day window or forty-five day window. Because now, you know, it's like a teacher grading test. You're not regrading the whole report, you're regrading the one that they got wrong, right? If they allowed the student to go back in and change the answer, put the right work product down. So that's one of my concerns. And you want me to do everything? I'll do everything. With the addition of the designated member from the planning board, and actually the same thing with heritage and some of these more advisory type, this is page two underneath G. I, if we're going to add that, I wouldn't I would like to see some timeframe in which the comments need to come back. And in lieu of that, they don't get a chance to comment. Okay? I think that's important because, you know, a lot of these boards, we're all volunteers. And maybe you can't get to it, but let's just say, Jason, you're the designated member and you got a workload that prohibits you to, to get back with those review this one in thirty days. Then essentially, you know, you can't delay the plan for that. And I don't know that we have much that we can really comment on anyhow. But under the pre-application
Real quick.
Yeah.
On the, the clock, does that start before or after you receive comments from from the design review committee? So
All of that happens within the thirty, within the thirty days.
What, okay. So, so what I'm at, I guess what I'm saying is you're sending, you could be sending the review out right away to, to STANTEC, but you still don't even have what might be comments from this design review committee.
Right, right. We would, it's, that's, their reviews are happening at the same time the STANTEC reviews are happening.
So, yeah, so I just don't think that that's an item. It's, if we all want to add that in, that's fine. But I don't think it should delay that. It shouldn't be the, the item that we're waiting on that delays the thirty day process.
Can I just jump in here, Mr. Chair, and just, we're, we're in full agreement that, that, I think even John's in full agreement.
He didn't say no.
He did say, the, the, the that we, nobody should be, we, we shouldn't be taking a second bite at the apple on resubmit. So if that's happening, I'm not, I'm not aware that it's happening, but I, I, I don't have a basis to say that it's not. That should not be happening and, and, and we will, we will ensure that that is, that that is addressed.
Yeah, I'm just relaying what I heard.
Yep.
Okay, then under two point zero three, in that conceptual phase, it'd be nice if we could tee something up. I don't know what it is. Something that'd be a little bit more formal. And I see the board going through in this stage and actually being more informational to the applicant. And I know Art used to do it all the time. It's like, what do you guys think about the plan? You know, and they go by each person, or by each person on the board and they give their input. But I think that if we could tee something up to make it more formal, because the cost of taking it from that conceptual stage, you know, subject to applying, you know, designing the plan within all this town's guidelines. But the cost from there is where they really start spending a lot of money. I mean, it could be a three hundred thousand dollar plan and if they come back and they go, well, at that meeting, you guys all said you loved the purple building, but now you're saying that you don't, you know, whatever it is, you know? And it's, and that's a big risk on, on, usually you're coming in for, for a conceptual review because you're pitching a product that maybe not necessarily, maybe a little bit right or left of what the, the, the con, what you should be doing. Like for instance, when we came for the multifamily project, uh-oh, what did I say wrong? When we came for Rocky Am Road and you don't need to know. When we came in for Rocky Am Road, that was the CUP, so we need to get your input as to whether or not you thought multifamily, which was a conditional use in that. But we took a lot of risk after that because then you, you didn't, that wasn't a formal review, but I mean, that wasn't a guarantee.
Right.
So it'd be nice if there was some way to kind of tee it up a little bit more so that you could
I, what you're saying, that's a perfect example, is you came and the board was all comfortable with, everybody was shaking their head up and down. You know, we still theoretically had the ability when you came, when you came formal to say, no, sorry. To the CUP that we had already kind of given you a, yeah, we think this is a good idea.
That's
I don't know how we
That's, that is a really good, that's a really good example because the, the purple building
Doesn't happen.
Does, well, and if it happens, it doesn't cost any much to change it. But let's pause here to just talk about the, the, when we're, when we're before the planning board or we're, or we're in the process leading up to the, the planning board, I think it's important to understand that the board and the, and the, and the staff have a, a constitutional obligation in New Hampshire to assist applicants with their projects. So that is sort of the overarching, that's an overarching theme of all of our work, which is you can't, you know, we, we can't like deny things on technicalities because we don't like them, I think is really the way of, of thinking about that. And so I think that if we're talking about, hey, yeah, we've got, we've got an application like Rocky Am Road that came to the board and the board loved it. And then, you know, the board just decide, or is having a bad day and decide that they don't like it when it gets back here formally?
Or the board completely changes from, you know
Yeah, I mean
Yeah, you have a new set of board members. Yeah.
Right. I mean, I think you have to recognize that there, there are reliance interests at stake when, when people, when people are investing money to design these things. And the whole point of the conceptual visits to the planning board is predictability and you know, getting it, getting it right from the, from the board standpoint and the community standpoint, but also not spending money that we, that we don't need to spend if it's, if it's a non-starter.
Had the board said, oh, no, absolutely not to the CUP, then you wouldn't continue on with, with
It's a big
engineers. It's a huge risk. It's a massive risk. So
Yeah, we had Lord and Commons come in conceptual. Eric Chidberg was here and they're going to bring in Manchester Water. But when the site plan gets submitted, Manchester Water was out, they're going to have individual wells. Now we know what problem they ran into with the individual wells, and now they had to go to dairy to supply public water for dairy for all phases except phase one. I don't know what they've done with phase one.
They ran out of water.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They did, they ran out of water.
They had to do a hydrology study and everything, and the hydrology study came back, there's not sufficient water.
Yep.
So the board, board was happy with, you know, Manchester Water, but then they changed the plans. There's nothing we could do.
Things changed and, and the board is fully entitled to say, you know, based on intervening, you know, factors.
Yep. So, so moving on, I just wanted to give my input on the forty-five to sixty-five days. Sixty-five days seems very long. Forty-five days, it helps, it helps. I guess we could do that. But sixty-five days seems very long. Or if, but I do understand like the Technology Hill or the one where, yeah, let's see, does it maybe there's a different category that PUDs fall into. Because that's what you're dealing with there, right? You're dealing with PUD, there's multiple different types of blended uses.
Yeah.
So lifestyle project.
Yep.
Maybe those are the ones that you set your timeframe for review. You know, I just wanted to point out a few things. One was when when the application comes in and not all the items on the checklist are there, or maybe the appropriate memo isn't on the top or what have you. I think it's, it's our responsibility as a town to give them timely notification of, hey, it shouldn't, because a lot of the, like you said, a lot of these people submit it and then they'll call up in fifteen days and say, where, where's the problem? Where's that? And if you don't get timely response to it, you'd be like, you never submitted the right thing. And we haven't even looked at it. So I think that is in here, but I just wanted to emphasize that point. And and then I'm confused with how, I think one of Mr. Chair, your, your concerns is to get these staff memos in a timeframe that you have the ability to review it before the Wednesday night meetings and not at the Wednesday night meeting while they're standing in front of us. I'm not sure that the way this is written in item D under two point zero five is actually going to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish. And when I'm saying that is it seems like it's a two-step process where if they get the information back to the staff within, what, twenty-eight days or something like that, then we will, you guys will have the memorandum out to the planning board on that Friday. And I, I think it's more of a situation where as a planning board, as opposed to designing a mechanism for it to be done, as a planning board chairman, maybe just request that it's done. Because I could see where a lot of applicants may not go this route, which isn't accomplishing what you're trying to do. Because maybe they don't want the planning board to sit on the plan and have all this information and they could have all these great questions for six days before the meeting. Maybe they'd rather sit there at the, at the podium and, and we are scrambling to get it figured, to understand what the heck they're, they're trying to propose here. So my, you know, that's just my thoughts on that. The, the site planning section is a lot like the subdivision section. So those comments that I just gave are across both site planning and subdivision. And I do on a general, you know, aside from this, I do think it, it makes sense to explore a few more options for third-party reviews if we're loading up one third-party reviewer for too many, for enough plans where yeah, they can't complete it in the timeframe that we want. So there should be options. That always helps. Maybe you should rewrite your contracts to say that they don't have thirty days if we need it back in in twenty or fifteen or what have you. And then yeah, I think a lot of the problems we're dealing with right now is, is human resources. You know, we're understaffed. And until you get somebody to help John and somebody in the planning department, I think you're going to continue to have these struggles.
Who's got Mike? I, I, I want to hit on one thing before we go to Mr. D. I agree with the from a third-party standpoint, two things. We've already discussed soliciting another, another third-party. But, you know, more importantly, I feel like a lot of the issue here is because of how much time is allotted through the by contract to the third-party review, I, I think is, is a lot of the issue personally.
Yeah. Well, if you stick to what you originally reviewed, the, certainly those second, third reviews should be quick. Because you can, should be able to address it.
Mr. D.
A couple of things, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to reiterate something that I said months ago, that clearly the, the planning department and the town engineer department is severely understaffed. And I think this is, that's part of the problem. I also went on record to say, let's look and see if we can find additional third-party reviewers in case we need them when a big, huge, major project comes up maybe. All that said, I would not like to follow the process that my good friend, Mr. Verani, just did. I would like us to start on page one and all discuss the very first red line and have a meaningful discussion about that. Decide whether it's, we're going to change that one or not, and then move on to the next one. I, I think, I think it's much more efficient. And, and that way, everybody gets to talk about that same thing at the same time, which makes more sense than
Just for the record, he asked me to comment on
I, I understand that he did that.
And I was being compliant.
He wants us to do it together.
Unusual for me.
Completed the entire checklist.
Yeah, that is unusual.
It's very unusual that I, that I like that happen, but, but I, I just think it's more efficient for, let's start at the first red line. Let's all talk about the first red line and then we'll move on to the next one. And, and
Sure.
I just think it makes more sense and, and will be quicker.
Those are the only proposed changes, so
It would, it would be quicker. And, and in between then, as we're, as we're rolling through, if someone has something to say, you know, like E, the very first one, E, the board hearing schedule is the very first one. But if someone has something to say on D, review of application, let's all talk about it. You know what I'm saying? Say what you've got to say about D. It's not redlined yet, but it could be if you want it to be. And let's just, let's go.
Sure. So we'll, we'll start with E. Meeting shall be held on the first and second Wednesday of each month at seven PM unless the meeting falls on a holiday in the Moose Hill Town Council chambers.
Do we start back over with me again? I think it sounds great.
The floor is yours.
I don't like that one either.
Hopefully this one's an easy win. We're all good.
And, and I think the change you made too, it means that we can, if we have, we can review applications on both
This change actually now This change actually now coincides with our rules of procedure that we had changed a few months back. But have not changed the, um, so we've actually kind of already.
You've already done that.
Already done this, with the exception of the meeting falling on a holiday.
Mr. Chair, I've, uh, what happens if, you know, what's the impact to the applicant if we start at seven oh three?
They're three minutes later than we've, than they wanna be. I think we need a timeframe, you know, the meetings are gonna start at seven.
I'm just kidding. I was, I was out of order.
No, you weren't.
So Jake, I, I, I have a question on this, so we deleted the line of third and fourth, no meeting, third and fourth week, no meeting. Does that mean that those, that those weeks are now open for meetings?
Usually what we've done, if we have an overflow meeting, especially like once we get discussing with the master plan steering committee. Is the fourth Wednesday, cause that's open, cause the ZBA meets here on the third Wednesday.
So we have the ability to request a special meeting. Any Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, whenever. All we're saying is our scheduled meetings are on the first and second Wednesday of each month. How are we gonna make a decision if you went out of the room? Yeah, everybody's good? Alright.
The only thing though, guys, again, so as, uh, Jeff indicated though, so what happens if it's on a holiday?
What typically happens?
So it just, we just wouldn't have.
If it does interfere, we do.
It's gonna go into the template, right?
We do one, one meeting.
We'd have one meeting a month.
It's January first or July fourth, so I mean, it's one of those.
And, and this, this schedule is published in advance.
Correct. This schedule's pu- published at the beginning of every year. So it would just be if there was a.
Fiscal year.
No.
No, calendar year.
This is, yeah, this is done every calendar year.
Should we put a note in here that says that the schedule will be published?
Yeah, I mean, that can't hurt. Yeah.
Let's add that.
Normally it's published like at the end, uh, toward the end of the year, so it comes out in November or so. It usually goes by the board for review. Anyway, everyone's all set with it.
Alright, so.
I'm sorry though Jake, a couple of other things, cause Mike gave me and I, I redlined this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So there's no special meetings outside the first and second week?
No, we can hold, by, by rules of procedure, we can hold a special meeting whenever we want.
I think again, the, the, uh, an applicant will not see that, looking at these regulations. If I'm, if I'm an engineer on the other side of the fence, I'm gonna read this, I'm gonna say, I need to meet, either make the first, second month, uh, Wednesday of the month, period. There's nothing in here that says that I can request that.
There was nothing in here to be, begin with that said, you can rec- uh, uh, an applicant, I don't believe.
I was gonna say, yeah, I don't know that we.
An applicant can't request a special meeting, we can say, we'd like to hold a special meeting, am I right on that?
Yes.
I mean, anybody can request anything.
We can say yes or no, or.
So you're saying add first and second Wednesday of each month at seven PM, you know, a schedule be posted. Schedule is subject to special meetings.
I, I, but I, I don't think applicants unders- I don't think all applicants know that they can, that, that you can do special meetings. And I don't think it's beneficial for everybody to.
So do you, so another thing would be the planning board has the authority to switch things around as they see fit.
Well, no, cause, cause now we're just taking.
There is no switching.
There is no switching, we'll take.
I think this is, I don't know, I, to me, silence is better than, cause the, the board has the inherent authority to call special meetings. And to regulate its own affairs, so.
What are you asking, John?
You know why I'm laughing? Because you're trying to make this more user-friendly and I just don't see that making this.
It's cause you're an engineer, nothing's user-friendly to you.
Yeah, well, we're just trying to architect it now. We don't want engineers to come in and.
This is, this is designer view.
Other than John Trotter, is anyone else that doesn't like?
Yeah, we're good.
We're good, okay.
Designer view, number ten, heritage and historic district or commission. The new thing is when applicable as determined by the town planner, anybody have any objection to that?
My question, what would be the criteria? Otherwise you're setting the planner up for, uh, failure.
So should we add some criteria to?
The, the, the concern is that the heritage commission only meets, I think, every two, uh.
Every other month.
Every other month.
Except, uh, we're having.
Every third full moon, depending on the, yeah.
This month, so.
Right.
Heritage Commission has frequent, uh, special meetings to.
Why can't the heritage commission come here when the applicant is here and, and talk about?
There are provisions, well, I mean, there are provisions for joint meetings, I mean, those are per- permissible. I think that, that, look, that the heritage commission as it is defined in the, I think in the town charter. But also in the, uh.
It's, it's in the regs.
In the zoning ordinance and. Is, it's twofold, okay, so it is, it's serving this function of providing advisory comments. On, um, projects or changes. And I think that a heritage commission is statutory, I don't, I haven't looked at the statute in a while. But really the, what I think of as the core function of the heritage commission is, it's, it's. It's not necessarily commenting on, um, projects like, uh, New Balance. That don't have historical features or elements. And, and again, I'm not saying that there isn't a role for that, but the core function that is, that I think, that state statute envisions for the heritage commission. Is it's going to serve as the historic district, the, uh, hi- historic district commission. Which is, it actually has ju- uh, jurisdiction over properties within the historic district. It administers the his- uh, historic preservation easement that, that may exist. And, um, it, it is, it is, it is providing advisory comment on things that have a historical. Or heritage nexus, which is not necessarily everything. So for example, a two-lot subdivision with no construction taking place on it. I don't think the, the statutes or the regulations envision that that should go to the heritage commission. But I think in practice, it is going to the heritage commission and I don't, I, I guess I question what the heritage commission would have to offer. Um, by way of advisory comment on a two-lot subdivision without a building on it.
Zero, zero comment.
Correct.
Usually the.
But it is still technically going.
You know, assistant planner would bring things in and the board would just, this is not us. The only thing with subdivisions is, uh, stone walls. And, uh, that's part of the, uh, town history, the aesthetics of the town. The other thing they're concerned with is especially with commercial buildings that don't fit in. And that's actually gave rise to the lookbook, cause that came out of the heritage commission also.
Correct.
And the question is now, I guess, where, where's the status of the lookbook? Because that's what all the applicants are referred to when they come into, you know, staff in the.
So, so, I think the lookbook, and that's, and that's, you know.
That's not regulatory though, within these regulations.
Correct.
So maybe we punt that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's still, that's still something that is beneficial and we wanna, but, but it begs the question. If the planning board is using the lookbook and the heritage commission is using the lookbook, and one of the things that we're trying to avoid here is. People getting different type of advice from different boards and commissions. How, how do we de-conflict what the, what the heritage commission might be saying about the design elements from what the planning board might be saying about the design elements?
Be a joint meeting.
Can you?
Well, that's why, that's why it might be better, one of them just come here at the same time as the applicant instead of, well, I'm, I'm. I don't like how an applicant has to go to all these different places at all these different times, which costs a lot of money. And, and, and a, and a lot of issues between boards when, when, when. This never happened, but just to throw something, the conservation commission starts talking about the number of parking spaces in a, in a development.
That, well, that actually does happen from time to time.
Yeah, and, and, and to be honest, sometimes, and, and, you know, I'll, I'll take the heat for this. Sometimes the chairs don't pull the members off a topic that is beyond their purview. And when I see those meetings, it's frustrating for me, and I'm sure it's very frustrating for the applicants as well. When they're talking about things that they shouldn't be talking about and, and the applicant, and you and I've had the conversation. Um, that, that the applicant doesn't necessarily know that it's advisory. Because they're working with thirty-five different towns in the state, different states or whatever, and they go to these boards. The chairman never says at the beginning of the meeting, this is adv- we are advisory only and we're gonna help you get through the process.
Because when motions are.
They never say that.
When motions are made, it makes sure it's, it's advisory, because that, that, that does happen.
But they don't say it's advisory, that's the problem.
It gets to what, what Joe was talking about earlier with, you know, by the time it gets to like a design, right? You've invested a ton of money. And it goes to the heritage commission and they say, we want you to change the roof, right? That could be a, a big thing that they don't actually have to do, but because the.
That's usually very, I don't think that's ever happened.
Well, no, but, but I mean, it, in, any, any change that comes from the heritage commission. The developer does not necessarily have to do it, cause it's advisory and if they've spent.
Unless it's a historic district.
Exactly, but again, let's talk like Tesla.
Mike, can you pull up the actual verbiage on the historical commission?
The, the, the heritage commission?
Exactly, the heritage commission.
Procedure also, so that, uh.
I would argue that the conservation commission is one of those things that's, that's in the same boat. Why does every applicant have to go to the conservation commission? It seems to me like for, for.
There's, there's a lot of technical, otherwise.
I understand that, but there are many applicants where, where it's not applicable.
Cause if they came in here, you know, when the heritage came in, conservation come in, would be, you know, one plan, three hours.
No, no, I.
I think, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, why does every applicant have to go to the conservation commission?
When there's nothing for the conservation commission to comment on, on a particular plant?
Okay.
Why can't, why can't there be somebody somehow, some way that says, this, this applicant, this land. Does, there's nothing to talk about for the conservation commission, they can skip that and miss it.
That's half of what I'm trying to do, that's, that's exactly what I'm trying to accomplish at, at, on the heritage level right now. Is, you know, what is the mechanism to say, this is not ac- applicable? Before the a- applicant goes and spends all this money preparing for a heritage commission, so they can go and just figure out that it's not applicable.
And I just wanna put an asterisk to what I said before, is that if they only meet every other month. And this guy's trying to get through, or this applicant's trying to get through a thirty-day process. Well, it's incumbent upon them to, to meet, I think, shouldn't be holding up the plan.
Well, whatever we do for heritage historic, I'd like to do for conservation.
Okay, the, the, the only question I have is, uh, what are the criteria that the town planner uses?
Mike, it's, I've read it before, it's somewhere in one of our regulations, I just can't find it.
Perfect, otherwise you're setting the planner up.
I, I agree.
I agree with that.
I don't think you wanna do, do that.
I agree a hundred percent, but by the same token.
But I think, I, I would leave this so we have criteria and we have input from the heritage commission on it. And they have a checklist, uh, Mike.
The, uh.
Would probably be a good start as far as criteria.
Yeah, when, when it goes out to design review. To the various board.
I thought it was just a blank, uh, comment sheet.
Well, I, 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 I can't.
There's specific items on the, uh, the comment sheets.
On the heritage sheet.
Heritage, heritage has one, the assessor has one, police department has one, fire department has another, uh.
And I think there is, there may be.
So there's, there's, there's a whole, uh, I think you can see the list here.
Mike, I can't. But I think that, I think everybody recognizes that. We, we don't wanna have people going to boards if there's no possible nexus to that board's jurisdiction. I do think that co- the conservation, it's hard to imagine a conserv- a, a, a project that wouldn't have a potential conservation impact. I think that's maybe where, where conservation differs from heritage. You can easily think about a, a, a project that, that doesn't have a historical nexus. But I think everybody, and, and that's sort of why it was here, is for discussion. And I agree that, yeah, there should be either written or, uh, consensus standards to guide the, the town planner's, um. Decision, or just write the, you know, write the standards into the.
Patrick Road, there's four, there's four lots that are C-three. I was involved in the C-three zone. I bought the first piece of land when it was rezoned to C-three. There's four lots of land there in the Peterson, former Peterson farm that, that are flat. Have no drainage, no wetlands, no, nothing. When, when, when and if that ever gets sold, why would those pieces, why would that developer need to have to go to the conservation commission? There's nothing there for them to talk about, nothing.
Well, they, they would.
All of the drainage and all the, there's a little squail. On the next piece of land that's on Gardner Circle.
Right.
Nothing on those four pieces of land, that's, those are the properties, the, the types that I'm talking about. Where that developer would have to go to an extra meeting for no reason.
Well, look, I, I'll accept your, your point about there's nothing there for purposes of conversation. They're not, they don't have to go to conscom if they're sold, they have, they would have to go to conscom if they're.
Developed.
Developed, or, or changed, or changed.
Right.
And so.
And, and if, but there's gonna be drainage issues, cause you're gonna put roofs where there was a field, so you're gonna have drain. But that's gonna be handled here, not at conservation, so why does that developer have to go to the con- conscom? Makes no sense.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying, so, so there's no CUP, there's no wetlands, there's no.
No wetland disturbance or.
There's no. Yeah, I guess, I guess.
No swales, no rivers, no, nothing.
There may be, there may be animals there, there may be plants there, I, I, I think we're speculating a lot, but.
Right, I mean.
Yeah, and.
It, it may take five minutes for the review.
Right, I think, I think that the.
Takes fi- it takes five minutes, but pe- people don't bill on the five-minute cycle. That, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
Well, we, I mean, that's to me, not a big concern on our part, our part is the, you know.
We're throwing things against the wall, Arthur, we're throwing it against the wall. I'm not sticking up for anybody, I'm just saying.
I'm not sure that, I, I mean, I think that, look, and I, I, you're, you're correct, le- legally, I think. That if there's, and it's the same principle as the heritage and historic district commission, which is. If there's no ostensible conservation nexus, there's no, there's no legal requirement that I'm aware of. That would requ- other than our regulations, that would require the conservation commission to participate in design review or formal review of an application. I, I will say that, I think that, yes, sometimes, all boards comment on more than they have purview over. But I, I do think that in a community that cares about, you know, we have a history of caring about conservation. And we are concerned about, um, the pace and complexion of development. I do think that from time to time, the conservation commission raises things that frankly, I hadn't thought of and others haven't thought of. Um, from a conservation standpoint, even if the project may not, on its face, have anything that's conservation-related. I think it's difficult to say on paper, there's nothing here from a conservation standpoint. I think reasonable minds can disagree about that, but I, but I do think that, um, we are lucky to have a conservation commission. That has people who are experts in what they do and I think that, like I said, from time to time, they raise a good point. That might not present itself on the face of a plan or an application that comes in.
And I am not, I want, just to be clear, I am not anti-conservation. I like bunnies just like everybody else. I like rivers and streams and lily ponds and, and whatever, uh, just like everybody else does and, and. But I, I'm, I'm just seeing the applicants having to go to all these extra meetings. For, for very little value on, on their part. And I'm wondering, to throw things against the wall, that's why we're opening this up. How, how do we consolidate or not? How do we, what, what do we do to, to, to make it work or not?
And I share that concern, I guess my point is that I think it's a little bit easier to define what a historic nexus is. Than what a conservation nexus is, just by definition.
Yeah, cause I mean, history goes into the flavor of the town, the architecture and, and everything, the atmosphere. But, you know, I, I think the more exposure it has with different committees and everything, there's more public input on it also, you want the public input. That's how, how I see it, that you get it out in the community as much as possible. Jeff knows all about it now with, uh, the master planning effort, is you wanna contact people. Because you do something and you start hearing from people after the fact, you know. One, if you're on the town council, you probably won't get re-elected. And again, also, we would not get, uh, reappointed by the, uh, town council.
And so the other issue is, what's happening right now locally, is that the conscom meets, it's on TV. The local paper reports on it and says it's this hu- there's this huge project gonna be built. Eight thousand apartments and twenty-seven hundred thousand square feet of rock crushing and whatever, and it hasn't come to us yet. There is, there is no project yet. There is, there is no project yet, and, and that's a problem. Because my phone rings, I don't know if anybody else's phone rings.
Oh, yeah, it does.
But my phone rings and, and, and my answer is, haven't seen it, I don't know anything about it. I don't know what to tell you.
I, 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 yeah, I.
I can tell you the planning board hasn't voted up or down on anything yet, because the planning board hasn't seen it.
Right.
So, and, there is, there is, the, the general public doesn't know that the ConsCom and the Heritage, or Heritage Commission at least, is advisory only. Historic is a legal thing, uh, for sure, but, but I will tell you from personal experience, very few people know or understand that those two boards are advisory, including the applicants, and I think that's a problem.
Well, it's also publicized that it's, that Heritage Commission approves something, you know, so that.
They don't, they recommend.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, but that's.
So, so somehow, somehow we're not doing, we're not advertising correctly, I guess, is, is, is.
I, I agree with you, I agree with you, Tony, that, that we, I think there is confusion. And, and these are, these are complex processes that, um, tend to get mis- misinterpreted.
Should we spell that out in here, where we put forward advisory recommendation?
Wouldn't hurt.
I, I think that.
Cause the developer would know and they can look through the rules and they'd see that at least, maybe, that doesn't help our publicity problem with the public, but that helps at least with the people going through the process.
Yeah.
And like you said, they're going through so many towns, that in this town, this is an advisory recommendation.
I think that's a, that's a great, yep.
And when they come.
But actually, the whole list of them.
The whole list is advisory.
Is advisory.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so the design review committee.
Well, ZBA, ZBA's not.
But we, we, we can, I think we can craft appropriate language that would, that would, and then, and then the agendas and the meeting minutes can be, should conform to what the caveat is that we put in here, yes.
Yeah, even like, uh, for Heritage, the, the agenda, you know.
Correct.
Items would say, you know, for advisory input to the planning board.
Yeah, I like that, I like that phrase that you just said.
Advisory input to the planning board.
For advisory input to the planning board.
Yeah.
Would it, would it help when you were sending something to, let's say, the Heritage Commission?
Yep.
That you note the certain elements of this project that are within their scope?
I, I think.
So you don't have to worry about.
I think so.
Yeah, cause it's, it's staff really, you know, puts the agenda together.
Right.
For Heritage.
Right.
I think you probably did the, uh, reason why.
Yeah, I think that, that makes good sense.
Couple of weeks.
Yeah. That's a, that's a good suggestion.
And that's all with, uh, the Village, uh, Technology Hill.
Right, the special meeting.
So, we're good with ten?
I, I, I have a quick question, um, I've lived in this town for almost twenty years, where is our her- Historic District?
So it's three properties, it includes the Town Common, uh, Tulich Field, and I think the Town Forest.
And the Historical Society.
And the Historical Society.
Five in total.
Oh.
Okay.
So, there's the common, the town forest. The, uh, Historical Society, uh, Tulich Field Road.
Yeah. The Lions?
No, that's not, that's not, please, we're not. Robbie should mention the Historical.
Lions is old, it's not historic.
The fifth one would have to go back and look at the town report.
So, Heritage District Commission.
I don't know.
Changed the verbiage.
Um, so, yeah, we're loo- we're looking to change that a little bit. We're looking for all the input that was just here, I saw you scribbling down. So you've got it on your side for our next set of, of reviews.
Yep.
Uh, so we're comfortable with ten. As well as the, uh, adjustment to nine, not, well, nine and ten both stating that they're both.
Be like nine, ten, and, so those are the only boards, yeah.
Yep.
Yep. And are we putting a pin in when is the, when applicable is determined by the town planner?
To me, I thought we were going under the, we just need a little bit more specificity.
But when it goes.
Yeah, yeah.
What is applicable.
It needs some specificity, cause I think it leaves the, uh, town planner in a dilemma.
Yeah.
Well, you, you could also just word that, we're under the purview of the board.
Yeah.
You don't have to say who determines that, then you're not in the regulation calling out the town planner, but still covering the same territory.
Yeah, it's determined by town.
I mean, in, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. I think that's, that's a good point, I think that's actually well put, very well put. Got all that, Mike?
Yeah, I do.
Alright. So, you sure? Uh, we're all my red lines here. So.
We're killing this so far.
Next one is eleven.
We've got, uh.
Number eleven.
Got number eleven.
We're on page three. We're almost done with page three.
A designated member of the planning board who may provide comments on applicable DRC comment sheet on the planning board's anticipated feedback, and any anticipated concerns regarding the project.
Mister Chair, I, one of my concerns with this is if the designated member is seeing the project, before the rest of the board, do they need to recuse themselves if at once it's formally? Like, I mean, I, I don't know if we have the answer there, but that's kind of where I would see.
I would agree with Jeff, cause I think it's a setup for recusal.
I thought that you found a statute, Mister Chair, that said, that is not a basis for recusal.
Cause there, you, there was something that I had found, of course.
Pretty clearly stated.
That clearly stated that the board has the right to design review. A- and actually in.
I've seen that same thing, Mister Chair.
Inside of our regular, regulations, our own regulations say, a design review can be of the planning board, not of.
In fact, if I remember correctly, in, in the New Hampshire book, the state book, there's actually a case law.
Yeah.
Uh, concerning that same.
The question is, what are they talking about for design review? Cause I think it's statutes, it's different from.
But if you think about it.
What is here?
But if you think about it, when we, when we get a set of plans on Monday for a Wednesday meeting, under that same.
We're having the same.
Same argument, you, you, you could say the same thing, then we all have to recuse ourselves, cause we've all seen it.
Correct, and I think that.
Before the meeting.
You, you don't want to get into anything like that, the whole board.
Oh, but we're doing it now, is what I'm saying, yeah.
But, but I would, uh, you know, I'd agree with Jeff, because, I mean, one of the first things I would do is, uh, challenge the individual who was there when the plan came up, you know, and board members have a right to do that. And I'm sure, uh, ultimately upon what the, uh, happens in design review, the developer could, uh, you know, break up also.
Well, the, the difference for what you're talking about, Tony, where we all see the plans on Monday, and then, is that for number eleven here, that person's already commented on it, and, and said, and said.
We have a right to comment on design review meeting.
No, no, I, 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 I understand that, but what I'm saying is, as opposed to just seeing the plans, and then talking about it a couple of days later, this person will have seen the plans, provided their feedback, provided their, um, opinion, and then prior to the meeting, so it's not just, you know, open to discussion.
I understand what you're saying.
They've already made their impact on the project.
With that, though.
I think there's a bias there.
Hold, hold on a second, uh, with that, um, design review meeting, an applicant may make a written letter request for a public meeting with the planning board about design review. So theoretically, we can all comment on the design review and they could come back with something that's totally different than what we commented on, and this. You're, you're saying, oh, there's, there could be a potential bias there, what's the difference, there is no difference, there's no bias.
But as long as it's a public meeting before the full board, then there's no, no bias. If one, one member is privy to information, a claim could be made, there's a bias there.
Right, what Jason's saying, can I paraphrase you, let me, let me give it a try?
Give it a shot.
And please, hit me in the head if I'm aware. I think what you're saying is, if an individual board member goes into design review and says to the applicant, I want you to take this parking space out, or I'm not going to approve your plan, then all of a sudden, the applicant is here before the entire board, now that applicant could say that that board member has a bias. Did I nail it?
Yep.
Okay, so, that said, can we get a ruling from council on that?
Can I add just a little point of clarification, Tony, to your point?
Yeah.
And that is, is the designated member speaking for the planning board, or is he speaking, he, she, speaking as an individual member of the planning board? Cause I'm also afraid that they would make a comment, and then they come, they, you know, the applicant would come here, we override the comment made from the planning board, well, the planning board's already approved us.
We think two parking spaces would help the water flow better.
Well, but, but let's also, let's also be clear, in a designer view, nobody's approving anything, they're making a recommendation.
But the, uh, mind could have been made up at that time, which, uh, you know, uh.
I think we have enough, I think we have enough doubt that we might need.
We, we can, we can run, I mean, I will tell you that if, if, I, I understand the, the concern. It surprised me that there was a statute, but if there's a statute that says it's not a basis for recusal, then it's not a basis for recusal.
Right.
Um, and, and I remember, as I recall, it was crystal, surprisingly crystal clear.
Yeah.
But I think, why don't we put a, a pin in that one, I'll get the statute in front of the board for next time, and the board can make a decision about whether it's enough of a concern, I think the practical concern is more of the, where the rubber meets the road, which is, assuming that it can be done legally, which I think it can, based on what you found, there's nothing to prevent what you, what you just described from happening, which is, is the person speaking for the, how, how can the single board member speak for the board?
Right.
I mean, I think the i- the, the idea is that the board, a member of the board would have more useful information about what the board is probably going to be looking for in terms of design elements than the staff. That's probably true, but it's all in, we don't have, we don't have s- design standards for most of these things, we have what's in the eye of the beholder, so.
There, there's, there's also, I mean, I know it's happened to me a bunch of times, is that I look at something and I, I have an opinion one way, and then after a conversation.
Correct.
I realize, well, that I was, I was incorrect.
Correct.
And if I'm the person, that designated member, and I say it, and they adjust things that way, and then I go, oh, no, right, you know what, Tony's absolutely right.
And if I were the designated member, I'd be really, really careful about what I said, because I.
Yeah, e- e- exactly, yeah.
So let's flip it over, what's the, what's the reason to have a designated matter, member of the planning board at DRC? What do we accomplish by having that person?
My thought behind it was really purely on aesthetics of, of a property or, you know, of a building, to give an applicant an idea before a meeting, what the expectation is gonna be. We can have them look in the look, you know, they, they go through designer view, and then they go to the Heritage Commission, who gives them some totally different recommendation, or, you know, tells, well, we, we don't like this, we don't like that, but they've already spent all this time designing something, before they even get to that step, can we say, you know, hey, this is what you're going to hear from the board, this is what they're going to like, and this is what they're not gonna like, so that applicant has a decision to say, okay, I want to take their recommendation, and now go through the Heritage Commission with flying colors, instead of, I need another Heritage Commission meeting, or the Heritage Commission didn't recommend it, only to go to the planning board to get something totally different.
I think that the, the prime example of, of where this could be useful is purple lilacs. We're not gonna, we can't put in our regulations, you should include purple lilacs, but somebody can say informally.
This is what the Heritage.
The board, or the Heritage Commission, they like purple lilacs, yeah.
And what's ironic is ninety-nine percent of the plans have a purple lilac that's not remotely native to the state of New Hampshire, and it's from Japan, so it's hysterical. As a guy who knows something about plants.
It's all, it's all the same genus.
But make sure that it's in there, as long as it's purple.
Yeah, the, the other thing with it, um, I think it, uh, adds to the transparency problem.
I, I, yeah, I would agree with that, yeah.
That planning board member is conspiring and hiding things from us.
Oh, I see this, so it's kind of the opposite, huh?
And that will come back and affect the board also. That, that, that makes me nervous also, so.
Yeah.
And if it's regarding aesthetics, I think aesthetics, the beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and everybody likes something different. I'm not gonna, you know, send me to these meetings, cause I'll probably approve everything, right, but you send Tony, and Tony's gonna have a lot of comments. It's just very subjective.
So don't send you to the meeting, is what I just got.
But, uh, which is fine by me, by the way, but, uh, it's just very subjective, and I just get really nervous when we put subjective things in a regulation.
I think it's a legal handle sticking out there, that some lawyer that comes before us with love.
So let's see, so let's see what, what legal says about it. We'll talk about it the next me- the next meeting, if legal says, yes, no, you can't do it, then it's a dead fish anyway. If he says you can do it, then we'll arm wrestle at the next meeting, to see if we want to keep it in or not.
So, so probably when that, that statute check.
Yeah.
And what, design review, of what the statute's talking about.
Yeah.
It could be different from what we're talking about.
Yeah, yes, good point, yeah.
Because usually with statutes, you have to go back and see words defined.
Yep.
Otherwise it gets, uh, it's confusing.
You know what it might have actually been, I think it was, um, I think it was New Hampshire Municipal. It might have been on New Hampshire Municipal.
You had some big, long.
Yeah, there was something somewhere in it. Yes, yeah, exactly, um, alright, so.
Do we want to, um, you, you mentioned conceptual designs, do we want to discuss a little bit about, do we want to, like, I personally wouldn't mind seeing us kind of emphasize that a little bit more than we do. And, and encourage that more than we currently do.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, I think it's important, that's why I brought it up, so, but I thought you took some notes there, and you were gonna.
Yeah.
See if there was something you could do for.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, I, I would agree that, I, I think having the conceptual helps the applicant more than it hurts them.
Absolutely.
Um, as long as we say thirty-seven times, thirty-seven and a half times, that, um, it could change when you come back, but right now, we kind of like it.
Yeah, I, I build, I build websites and apps, right?
Yeah, right.
And, and you give, you give them a wireframe, and you say, what do you think of this? And if you don't do that, and you just go straight to design, you're, you're killing yourself, you know, as opposed to.
Absolutely.
You go, what do you think of this draft right here?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sure.
Or we can change our ordinance to require it.
No, we can't, we can't, because by statute, they have the right to go directly to formal review, directly to formal planning board review, so we cannot put it in a statute that says you're required to have a conceptual design, because they have every right tomorrow to go apply for something that nobody's ever.
The statute gives us the right, so it's like a naval legislation.
We, we can, we can look at.
That's something for our authority to, to check.
Well, uh, my, my whole thought process was that we don't mandate it, but when they come, I think it's extremely helpful, and we should give them some concrete advice.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm sure, uh, all the faith in Mike, they'll come up with something that makes sense.
Yeah, and, and that initial conversation that you guys sit down.
And I, you know.
Yeah.
We should do this, you know.
It's simple, it's bricks or clabberds.
I think, um.
Gables.
Mike, I think a very, I, I think a good way to, if you were to look at our neighboring community's website, that's the end of our name, Derry, they have a very visual, what is the process? And I think that would be very beneficial to this, and inside of that, it says the things that you should do. Maybe not required to do, but should do, I think would, would go along with this quite wonderfully. I'd be more than happy to share it with you.
Hope to check it out.
Um, so let's go to.
Page four.
Hey now. Slow down. I'm not getting off three.
Are there CD-ROMs stills?
There are.
There are still, they're still around?
Apparently.
Well, I guess we're gonna give them the option.
So number six or flash drive?
Hold on, one sec, Mister B. Here we go.
Yeah, or a flash drive.
Yeah, or a flash drive, um, can we just say it, a flash drive? Do people actually still come in CD-ROMs? That sounds super ninety-eight of you.
Seventeen different CD-ROMs?
I, I have a hard, I don't know the answer to that, but I, I think you can easily say.
Do you know what a CD-ROM is, Mike?
I'm thirty-eight, I, I, I did use them a little bit growing up.
So let's look to, to get rid of CD-ROM and they come on a flash drive.
Yeah.
Because my guess is we might not even have something that can read a CD-ROM. Because my guess is we might not even have something that can read a CD-ROM.
I was about to say, a lot of computers now don't even.
Can't read a CD-ROM.
Yeah, a lot of computers now don't have CD-ROM.
Do we have, do we have computers in town hall that can take a CD-ROM? That's the.
I'm sure in I, in the dark recesses of the IT room that they do, but not like that can be used easily.
Let's strike CD-ROM and it's on a flash drive.
Cup holders now.
Yeah. Um, we all good with that?
Yep, yep.
So, section D, schedule. Once it's determined, then all required checklist items per section two point oh blah blah. The planning board shall acknowledge the submission in writing and specify a period from forty-five to sixty-five days from the date of acknowledgement. Honor before which the first round of design review comments shall be returned to the applicant. The time of period will reflect the complexity of the application and other anticipated factors affecting the speed of review. Anybody have a comment?
John, did you have a comment on this change? It's on D, schedule, all red.
Bottom page. Yeah, I, I have it. Yeah, again, the, the time of period will reflect the complexity of the, the application, the quality of submission or other workload of projects that are submitted.
It also spills to the next page.
Another anticipated factors. Yeah. I, I guess my other comment though too would, to, to be, is to provide a reasoning for the incompleteness.
That you would want to provide a reasoning?
Yep.
Okay.
It should be, it should be provided.
A reason should be provided to the applicant why it's incomplete.
Right, because you know, if I say it's incomplete, they're just going to say trotters added again.
Right.
No, it's not complete, because you don't have a traffic report, you don't have the geometry to your, to the road. You know, and again, and that's where my other comment is, who's going to make that determination? I'm going to look at it totally different than.
Than the planning department.
The planning department.
I, I.
The town manager's doing everything already.
I, I can't review a plan.
Yeah, he's getting better on drainage. He has a quiz Friday morning.
I don't want to work for him, so I'm not going to apply for the assistant engineer.
Even get him to work for me.
So, I think that, I guess my, my comment on this is, I think that at this stage, it's going to be difficult to. I, I, I think we need to look at like substance versus, um. It's substance versus process almost. Like, at this stage, we're, we're checking stuff in to try to get the thing out and, and under review, under third-party review. And, and I think that there will be plenty of opportunity in that. I, I think what, what the checklist envisions is, you're going to just, you're able to tick through things and say, okay, I have something that says it's, that calls itself a drainage report.
I think that, so let's, I don't think this one's ready yet. I think there's more that needs to be done to it. Let's go to why we said, how can we change this to make it work? The DRC shall review the submitted plans within thirty calendar days of the submittal date of the complete design review application. The underlying issue here is that the third-party review company also has thirty days to review what we're supposed to review in thirty days. And if they're not giving it to us in thirty days, then we're out of our own.
So, so.
It's a stacked thirty days, that's why.
Correct.
So that.
Not consecutive thirty days. When you stack them like that, that's where you, that's where you got problems.
But the issue there is, is the staff needs to review the comments returned back by the, by the third-party review, you know?
Well, so there's, that is one of the issues, but I think the other issue is, one of the other issues is that thirty days is not. Or whatever shorter period of time we could ask the third-party or require by contract that the third-party reviewer perform their review. I don't think it's enough time for a, a meaningful thorough review of a complex project to occur. I think that. If, if, if we said to StanTech, we want the comments back in twenty days. Yes, that would help us, but what's the quality of the review that we're going to be getting from them? Because twenty, twenty calendar days is, is not twenty business days and. I, I mean, we could certainly explore it with them, but I think it's going to cost more, it's going to cost the applicant more.
Correct.
Um, which they'd probably be happy to pay if they, I mean, if, if it really were producing a, what, a more timely review and approval. But I just worry that, we're already talking about really, really tight timelines here, and this is not straightforward work for the most part.
It, it also depends on the backlog, you know, if we have three projects with them as well as a second round of design comments and things like that, you know, there's, they have a limited resource as well. So if we then turn around and say, you got twenty days to do all these.
Yep.
Is how.
I think that's why.
Are they going to be?
I think that's why it stresses the importance of adding a third, a third, third-party review company as well to this. I disagree with, if we give the third-party review company less time, they're going to put out a product not as good. I, I disagree with that just.
I don't know.
Just from, you know, in my own.
You can get all the points by the company.
Is it?
They would probably have to give some of it to like a junior person.
Well, and I disagree with the fact that it's going to necessarily cost us more. Because if you're going to put the same man hours into it and they're billing by the hour, why should it cost us more?
The applicant, not us.
Well, okay, the applicant.
Because I think you have to add additional people to the review.
So John, in your history, is this a high school student's problem? English teacher gave Mary thirty days to do her book report. She started on day twenty-eight.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that what you're seeing with design, with these design review folks, or are they starting on day one?
Well, they're, they're, they're starting as soon as they.
Thank you.
They, they understand their, their.
Okay. Had to be asked and answered, right?
But, but I, I mean, I think that.
But still, at the end of the day, that's not the teacher's problem. We're the teacher.
I understand.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I, I understand, but.
And.
My, my point is, if it was a high school student's issue of starting on day twenty-eight, then extending the days doesn't help, because then they're going to start on day forty-two.
Yeah.
Or, or day sixty-four, or day sixty-five.
I agree with that, but also.
That's why I'm asking, but I.
Also, if the teacher said fifteen days, get it done in fifteen days, you know?
Do we typically have the same people reviewing our, our plans?
Yes.
So if it was to expand out to other people temporarily, right, like let's say we had five plans there and they had twenty days to do it, and so they had to bring in two new people. Would those people necessarily be familiar with our requirements, regulations?
No.
Initially, they would not be.
Not initially, yeah. I mean, the, the reason, the reason we are so reliant on StanTech is because they know our regulations inside and out.
And they are truly engineers, where anything that goes out of that office, a junior engineer will look, will design it. And then there's a, a, a seasoned engineer or principal that will look at those comments or, whether it's a design or the comment.
But, but I think that, let's take a step back and just talk about, again, why, why we're having this discussion, which is, the board reasonably would like to hear what we have to say, thank you for your trust in us, about a, a project in, in advance of making a decision. In order for us to produce, and we talked about what the timeframe is. For, right now, we're, it's basically two, two days, two, two and a half days for us to be able to produce a memo. Not enough time. You're not going to get a, a good product from us if we're, if we're moving that fast. So yes, we need to move, you know, we, we need more time to review, whether you move third-party up so that they provide earlier comments, or whether you provide us additional time.
This is, that's what I'm getting at.
We need more time to review.
We're hurting ourselves, because it's taking, in my opinion, way too long to review some.
So we.
I'm not talking about the PUD on technology hill of reviews. I'm talking of eighty percent of the plans that come to the town.
Right.
And, and to me, back to adding more resources, that's not our problem. I, I think that if I have a project that I have to get done in fifteen days, I have to staff more people to, I have to do what I need to do to meet my end of the contract.
And, and I.
So I think that, and again, I understand we're in contract with them, but I, I really think a lot of the issue here is in the fact that they have thirty days to review a plan.
So, so what is the problem though?
I, I think they should, we are stretching our timeline out to meet, we're stretching our timeline out to meet the people we're contracted to's requirement. That's backwards. We're, we're the customer. They need to meet what we want.
So you're going to pay for it.
Okay, I want reviews back in fifteen days.
I, I.
And I think you're going to pay for it both in, in monetarily as well as quality.
I totally disagree, because if I have a project that I need to put out in fifteen days, you bet it's going to look exactly the same as if I had thirty days to do it, because I'm going to put the right manpower.
See what happens when we go out for a third, a third, third-party reviewer, Jake.
Well, I was going to say, so I think there's, there's two, there's two things here. I don't know the answer, whether, I don't know what, what StanTech would say about having a shorter timeframe. I think it's worth asking the question. I also think that adding a third-party reviewer could potentially, an additional third-party reviewer or more could potentially assist in this, in this, in this issue.
Are we unstacking it though? We already said that, that the thirty days are stacked.
That's a grant, that's a given. I think it needs to be.
Days are stacked because of our own.
Yeah.
So we need to unstack it so that.
Correct.
The luninary planning and engineering and our, so our folks have time to review the reviewer.
Correct.
The comments to us, so that we're not in a position where we have to rubber stamp things, because we haven't had a chance to look at it.
Right, and I'll, and I'll, I'll say it. We need, we need a week to.
No, and that's what I'm saying. That's why, so we need to make these people perform in fifteen days. So, so let's stick with the thirty-day timeframe. You have fifteen days to review something. We need to, these people need to perform, and to me.
I'm willing to, I'm certainly willing to ask the question.
To me, I would, to me, I would look at this and I'd say, hey, listen, this is going to go one of two ways. You either need to start meeting a fifteen-day deadline. Or we're going to get a, we're going to submit an RFP and we're going to get more companies in there, so that way we can produce in a time that we need to. That's the way my world works. If I can't do it.
Worth a discussion.
If I can't do it, okay, no problem. We're going to have somebody that can come in and do it. That's how my entire world works.
So we keep the thirty days, so the applicant's going to get thirty days. But the third-party review is going to be done in fifteen days, which gives our folks fifteen.
Fifteen days.
Or maybe a few less, you know, weekends or however that works.
If that's the way we, again, I feel as though we are extending our timeframe to accommodate.
Right, and I don't want to do that.
We're the client. This town, these applica, we are the client. We shouldn't, and I understand that's our contracts written right now.
But I would also be willing to unstack the thirty days.
Absolutely.
And give them, give them, still give them thirty days, and then give, that would give, and then give our folks fifteen days.
Well, that, that's what this, that's what this is, that's what we're doing, that's what we're talking.
So, so that's.
No, that would give you a forty, I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think they need thirty days to review the average plan. I think it should be fifteen, and that gives us fifteen to meet our thirty-day timeline.
I had a question. Is this every single time it goes back in the review? Is it, is this setting us up for, okay, now you get forty-five days, it's the second round review?
Well, I think the reason that the regs don't spec, specify what the resubmit deadlines are is because every resubmit.
It's based off of how, how much content is in the.
In the comments and what's being changed.
Or is there sixty?
I mean, I, I will agree here, whatever the timeframe for initial review is, it should get no longer, certainly, on resubmit. We shouldn't be taking longer.
It has to be shorter.
It has to be.
Unless it's a hundred percent re-review.
I'm going to tell you guys, there's junk out there. I've been looking at this stuff for twenty-three years. There's junk, okay?
I think that, that one of the things the board could do to, I think if, if we to, to respond to that, I think that if the, if, if we establish a, a process that, that we think is workable, you have to allow for what John just said, which is we're not changing anybody's expectations necessarily, but we need, we need the board to back us up when we, when we, when we say this thing is not ready for prime time, we're not recommending conditional approval. Um, because you've all been in the room, people, people don't respond well to that.
Right.
So, we, I, I'm, I'm willing to, um, you know, look at these changes. I, I think in, in a lot of ways, they're, they're doable, but you're still, you're still going to be putting low qua, you're still going to have a certain quantity of low-quality.
Always.
Projects that are being put through this process that now has tighter timeframes for the third-party, that's fine. But it's going to generate a gajillion comments, and they're, they're going to, they're going to call us and then they're going to pissed off, and then they're going to be pissed off when you continue the, the projects.
Well, then you can sit there and say, well, you have six thousand comments that are, that are unanswered. You've, I have no problem telling a couple of these people you're putting together a bad plan.
Right, and I would like.
I would, absolutely will. I can think of three or four that come to my mind like this, and I'd be more than happy.
And I would be, I. For me, one board member, I would like to probably see what that lifecycle of that application was. Did they, you know, skip through design review, go right to formal? You know, like, what are those checkboxes? Because that can, you know, that tells me.
That's a good point.
That they haven't kind of gone through our process, and it allows us to make that assessment and say, okay. You know, I, you know, I'm seeing, seeing patterns here, seeing, okay, why didn't you go through design review? What was the purpose there? You know, it looks like you met with town staff on this, this day, they provided this feedback, that type of stuff. It, from, you know, from my seat, and I see like, oh, you know, like, you know, the, you know, the applicant saying, oh, I didn't know, blah, 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 blah. I didn't get that email type thing. It definitely shows that lifecycle, and I think that's probably a good resource for us to have.
That's a great, great point.
Could I just, like, I can understand why that first review, and I think I brought it up a couple of times now, may take longer. But those second and third reviews, so, so Mike or John, if you went to StanTech and said, we need them in twenty days, because the board asked us to do this, and they said, that's unreasonable. Well, I would probably go back to them and say, well, what about the second and third review? Could we tighten that timeframe up? Because, you know, you get through three reviews, there's a hundred and thirty-five days in just that process. And that's what most of the applicants are complaining about. Not necessarily that maybe the first review was in forty-five day, um, it's the cycle resetting itself over and over and over.
What, what, would we be comfortable committing to forty-five days for the first review, and then thirty for the following reviews?
Seems crazy to me. That's insane. That's a half a year by the time you get in. Back to what these guys are echoing.
But, but, but a third review is only happening because you haven't addressed the items from the first review.
No, but sometimes, can I, can I address that?
Yep.
So, so here's what I'm hearing, and I've heard this a couple of times, and it goes to something that Giovanni said, um, earlier in the process. And I'm a visual learner. So the applicant comes in, it's been, it's DRC review, there's two items. Okay, this one and this one. So it goes to re-review. From where I sit, the only thing that should be re-reviewed is these two items. But what I've heard twice now is that it comes back with these two items being, being reviewed and either accepted, rejected, or tweak this, or tweak that, and then, oh, by the way, this too.
I don't.
The applicant's like, well, wait a minute, that, where did that come from?
I can't speak to that. I mean, you would have to.
And that's frustrating.
So for instance, again, your, your drainage analysis, you didn't provide us the twenty-five-year storm anal, or the fifty-year storm analysis.
Yeah.
So, we can't complete our, our review of the fifty-year storm analysis. They provide the fifty-year storm analysis, you don't have a, for the free board. Is that additional comment? Yes, it is.
Yeah, but it's relevant to.
But it's relevant to that.
But what I'm hea, what I'm hearing is, what I'm hearing is, I've got, all my comments are, are on stormwater drainage. And then in the second review, they go, by the way, you're missing ten parking spots. That's, am I hearing what, what is being said over there? Am I understanding?
I didn't hear ten parking spots, but it's something totally irrelevant.
That's what I mean.
Why I brought this in on the third thing, because the first two were pens, and then this one was different.
So I, I hear you, Jake, so what is, you tell me, so that I can understand it too.
That's what I'm trying to figure out here.
Yeah.
You know, so.
So you guys understand why there would be more comments?
Yes.
With that example?
Yes.
With that example, a hundred ten percent. What I'm getting at is if all the comments were on drainage and then in the second review, all of a sudden comes up comments about parking spots.
But no, nobody.
I, I totally agree with you, Jake, but I don't think that that's what, I know that that is not what they're doing.
Okay.
Either of the consultant.
If that is happening, somebody needs to bring it to our attention so that we can address it.
Okay.
And, and when somebody says there's, there's an additional comment, I would like to explain it to that person why that additional comment is. So again, one way of doing it, they submit plans because again, they know better. They don't follow the regulation. They design a road. The road meets none of our standards. The vertical curves, the horizontal curves, the side slopes, whatever. One way of doing it, tell them, you know what, doesn't meet town standards? That's the comment. Don't bother looking at any of the drainage and everything, because number one, the road doesn't. Don't bother looking at any of the drainage and everything, because number one, the road doesn't meet it, they're not showing curving, it's done, you're done. So you know what, no further review, the, the, the road does not meet town standards, no further review is, is going to occur. They give it back to the applicant, so he's gonna have to go back to, to the drawing board. Again, what they do now, yeah, at times, they'll look through it and, and the other thing that you guys have to realize, they're looking for us to be their QA.
Right.
Yes, I agree, I totally agree with that.
And to that point, I did that all over the Lakes region with projects where, where. I, I, I was born at night, but not last night, if I figured out that I could get a town to do my engineering for me, and I didn't have to pay for the engineering.
There you go.
I just went at it, like, bought them lunch, donuts, and they engineered the whole thing for me.
But I, but I.
And, and, and so, I, I hear you.
I, I, I think, I think there's agreement on a couple of things here, though, one is, this second bite thing should not be happening, if it is happening.
They need to bring it to our attention.
We will address it. Cause that's, that's BS. Number two, um, the initial, the initial review should be the most involved.
Absolutely.
It, it should be the most thorough, and if everybody's doing what they should be doing, the subsequent reviews should be less involved.
I agree, totally.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Totally agree with that.
Where do we stand on D? Where are we? What are we doing?
I can't, I, I guess as one person, I wanna hear back from, I would like to hear what StanTech's response to, can you meet?
We'll ask both consultants.
It might be a good kind of stop at that point, because what, what, we're at, I think we're at a, a fork here.
It's two different things going on.
Right, if, if, and, and what, what we learned from the, our discussions with the third parties is going to dictate which path we take here.
And can you ask them initial versus subsequent reviews? And, and can you, if you can't tighten one up, can you tighten up the other one? We can, Johnny, but again, what, what ends up happening, you know, so if, if, if the thing is totally off the rail to begin with, so they're, they're starting over again.
No, I see what you're saying, that the second, the second review has potential to be noticeably bigger than the first review.
Exactly, but maybe the, maybe the approach is that.
Because of a horrible plan, where, well, we're just not even gonna, you know, you have to start with.
But I think, I think we can, we can, we can be a little bit more candid in some of our memos and, and discussions with the board that. This is a, this is, this is like a redesign here, or this is, this element was completely overlooked. You know, right now, they're kind of written in engineer speak, and it, and it can be, and the, the lead can get a little bit buried. And so I, I think that part of this is, it all comes back to communication, hey, 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 board, you know, or, you know. If, if we're in design review, we're not, we're not talking to the board, but we can be a little bit more direct and communicative about what the issue is.
I guess with that, if I were, let's go to this site plan that is just terribly put together. Are they still waiting thirty days to figure out it's ter-, like, what is that, is there some mechanism that, you know. We sit there in, in day four of review, we go, well, this is trash.
So what we can do?
Go back at day four, not day thirty.
We can put a limit on the number of comments, you know what, when you get to twenty-four comments, stop your review.
Yeah, something.
You know, at one time, I remember, we used to do that.
I remember that.
Yep, just to number the comments, and we used to asterisk the, the repeat comments.
Yeah, it was the, uh, I dragged us, eight comments, anymore than eight comments, continue.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I remember that.
And, and the applicants knew that, too. We're not gonna go formal until we get down to eight comments, or whatever the number was.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause I, I mean, I feel like, so let's take a review, I feel like you would know in four days if you have a terrible. To me, it's like revise, I, I have no comments, revise and resubmit.
And.
Done.
Yeah.
You know, but they're figuring that out in day four, not day thirty, you know what I mean, or day five, day six, not day thirty, to me, it's just. This is junk, revise and resubmit, you wasted five days of your own time.
There's two, there's two things I have to say, one is, um, I would suggest, I think that, I, I think it would be really beneficial if one or more representatives of the planning board. Attended the meeting, uh, where we will, or meetings where we will discuss our requests of the third party.
I would love to.
Viewers. Um, I, I think that's important, number two is, just be aware of the fact that the. The engineers who are not doing a good job are not telling their clients that they're not doing a good job, and their clients don't know that they're not doing a good job.
So, so, and like, yeah, no, we see that, but.
When they, when the clients understand that their engineers not doing a good job.
To that point, and, yeah, I would, I would volunteer if you, if you so choose. Um, but to the point where if you did say it was completely junk, and you turned it around five days and handed it back to them. That, uh, applicant's gonna start getting an idea that the engineer is.
I need to do my job.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well, the applicant's gonna get, like.
Correct.
They're, they're just gotta get teed off to the fact that the engineers are a good engineer.
But, but, but.
Waiting till the end of the third day to say it's complete junk.
Let me say this.
Problem.
Correct.
This guy is gonna get blamed up the wazoo, so if we're gonna start doing that. This board has to be absolutely behind John when he makes the call and says, this is garbage.
A hundred ten percent.
Well, this chair, this, this chair has already done that once.
Yep.
I think it was his second meeting, looked at an applicant and said, buddy, this is, you've been here three times, you still got twenty-two comments, what's going on? I think was your exact quote.
Yeah, probably.
And, and.
Yeah.
You know, so.
I think if it was, if we had a way to clear, to clearly communicate that. There's not one ounce of me that wouldn't support all of the town staff in saying, this is a horrible design. It's not even remotely ready for review, I would support that all day, you know, absolutely.
I mean, John, we already know that your favorite word is no, right?
No.
And, uh.
Have a good night.
And you have thick skin, so.
And, you know, not for nothing to, a, I, I guess, I, I'm putting it in my shoes if. If I was doing this, or if it was a situation that I was in, and I did have a bad review from the engineer. The engineer would not be the only person I was telling about the bad review, I would be, I personally would make sure that. That the, the owner or the applicant knows that, I wanna let you know, this is going terribly because you have a horrible. Horribly put together design.
Yeah, and, and we can, we can generate a form letter that communicates the information.
Something that is very, something that's very direct to the applicant, so the applicant can't go, oh, why didn't I get my thirty days? They can go to their engineer and go, get your stuff together, you know, I, I think that's a very important part of this.
Yeah, and, and I think.
We've, we've seen, uh, arguments out in the hallway after, this is back in the, our previous, uh, you know, town hall. With, between the, uh, the applicant and the engineer, in fact, we saw a, a program manager in the name of the engineer. It was actually fired right then and there, because when they came back, the continued blame of the other engineer who knew his stuff.
And, and to be clear, like we talked about last week, the applicants are our customers, right, that's the, that's the word that we used, not the engineer.
Bingo.
The applicant, and so if we can help the applicant out and let him know. He might want, wanna rethink who you hired to do this work for you, because this guy didn't do anything, he didn't.
Yeah.
He didn't read our regs, he didn't follow any of the directions, didn't do, I think that also helps the applicant. And could possibly sho-, help him or her shorten that, that timeframe.
Absolutely.
Maybe.
Yep.
Um, so.
So I, I, I think for, for purposes of time, I think this is not ready.
Oh, yeah, yeah, agreed.
I think we've talked about a lot.
Yep.
Um, that's not ready.
And I think we've got some homework that we, that we need to do, and again, I certainly invite the, the board.
I agree, um, staff memo, planning department, I, I, I almost. I almost feel like I can't even talk about this until.
I think that's right.
Until we address, so let's just, same with the optional submission, like, it, this is all piggybacking on.
This is all, yeah, right, this is all assuming that they're gonna continue to do thirty days.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um. Is that the, how did I end up back here? Oh, cause now I'm on the site, I went from subdivision to site plan, so it's all.
It's essentially the same.
Yeah, um.
You have that CD-ROM thing on number three again.
Yep, so that would all echo the same exact comments, it's the same stuff, just with a different title on the top, so that would echo the same comments.
And the other thing that we did, just so everybody, we, we, we tried to align the, we did, made some moving around so that the, the subdivision numbering. And it was all the same numbering.
Um, so make sure that you make that change, please, on number three, or the second set that we have. So CD-ROM or three point five floppy disk again.
Yep.
Thank you.
I did have, this is one we didn't talk about, um, but I felt as though it was relevant actually off a town hall you had with a butter notices.
Oh, I'm glad you, you brought that up, yeah.
I think it would be worth adding in, um, if somebody had brought up at one of Mike's town halls. Um, that, you know, well, the abutter to the property is the town of Londonderry. Which say it's a piece of conservation land, the town of Londonderry is the abutter, the people on the opposite side of that land owned by the town of Londonderry did not get noticed. I feel as though it's appropriate to add a provision that, um, you know, if a town owned. If, if there's a town owned parcel that is the abutter, those direct, those abutters, the next layer out.
Butters on the.
Become the actual.
I, I think you're, I had exactly the same idea, and I asked legal to look at this, um.
Because there is a statute.
Because there's a statute, and I will forward the, the legal analysis that I got back from, um, from, from the attorney to the board. Um, so, so that we can have a discussion about that next time, I, it's, it's a little unclear whether we, we can expand the definition. I don't, there's nothing that says that we can't, but.
I don't think we can exte-, I, I, I feel as, sorry, Mike, I just totally.
No, 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 no.
So I don't think we can expand the definition, I think we can. Re-, make a reasonable judgment to say we're gonna notify.
I, I, I would, I would agree, and I don't think the stakes are particularly high here, because I, if somebody sues us and says. You shouldn't be making me pay for certified mailing to the, these five additional abutters.
Yeah.
Who cares? Like, I mean, not, not who cares, but we're not, this is not high stakes poker.
Twenty bucks of additional abutters is not worth the ten thousand dollar.
Yeah, yeah, and it, and I think that, that the commu-, this is something the community feels strongly about, and I think it's a legitimate concern.
Correct.
So, if I can, so in the New Hampshire Planning and Land Use Regulation, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four addition. Six seventy-two, colon, three, a butter. Um, it's a pretty lengthy, um, definition, but I had flagged it because to that. Case that just happened, it says, or is directly across the street or stream from the land. Under consideration by local land use boards.
Correct.
So that would gives, I mean, wetland, stream, river, pond, whatever. Would allow you then to notice those people as well.
Yes, but it wouldn't be, I s-, I see what he's saying, but it would, still wouldn't cover, you know. Here is the house, this is the land owned by the town.
Right.
And this is Mrs. Smith.
Right.
This is the only thing getting noticed when in reality, Mrs. Smith is the abutter to this project.
Correct, and I think, I think the issue there is that. You, you, I think people would reasonably question whether the town as in a butter, not as the person, the, the governmental entity that's processing the application.
Is actually in a.
Is actually representing the interests of, a, a, is really participating in the process as in a butter.
I agree.
They're not.
I agree.
We're not, yeah.
I totally agree, so that was one that's separate of this, that I felt was. Worth discussing, cause I, I thought in your town, you know, you've been doing these phenomenal town halls, I thought it was some, some.
I thought it was great feedback, yeah.
Um, so.
How about the Valdi family, where the, uh, a butter notice goes to the association. The individuals in there, cause we had some very upset people, this probably goes back five years now, five, six years.
Yeah, they put it on the community board that no one looks at.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
But, uh, it, it went to the association, no one knew about what was going on, some people heard about it, they came in to the board, and they're all upset. Cause they should have been notified.
Yeah, that's ha-, that's handled in six seventy-two, three also, um, and it clearly says, uh, it has condominiums. And, uh, trailer parks, um, and it goes to the owner, not the individual.
Owner of the property.
Owner of the property.
So the individuals that live on there don't get notified, and remember, I think, uh, Colleen, there was enough money in the budget at the time. Notified all the individuals, so that's, even though it's not covered by the statute.
Probably a best practice, yeah.
It's something to let people know, because. When they find so- something out from, uh, you know, either Facebook or, or neighbor, they get very upset.
See, this says.
They told about.
It says two oh five A one two, uh, Roman numeral two, the butter includes the manufactured hu- housing park owner. Um, in this case, and the tenants who own the manufactured housing. Which adjoins or is a direct abutter, so in this case, the case law for the, that particular trailer park.
Everybody.
Said that it has to go to the owner and to the individual because they're condominiumized.
Yep.
In this particular case law, it had to go to each one of those trailers.
That were, that were physical.
That were in, in the park, the ones that were physical abutters, cause some of these can be five, six, seven hundred.
Right.
Of.
Correct, if you've got, if you've got a building right behind the other one, they're no longer in a butter, it's, it's this building that is, yeah.
Correct, so, anyway.
When it says, says owner, does that mean renter also?
Yeah, if you're not doing anything tomorrow morning, six seventy-two is a really nice chapter.
Counselor DeFrancesco.
Yeah.
Counselor.
Six seventy-two is.
Esquire.
Counselor with an S.
Esquire.
A very nice chapter. The case law is very interesting reading.
He has a doctorate in common sense, apparently in law, too.
There you go. There you go. There's that doctor guy I heard at Shaw's the other day, look, there's that doctor guy.
They just think you're a doctor because you got white hair.
PhD is a doctorate, not a doctor.
Um.
Moving along.
Anything else, I, I mean, that's through what we have, obviously, we know we've got some, some, some changes that we need to make in order to even. Carry through the, the rest of them, is there anything else from, you know, that, that the board would, wants to look at?
Can I make a nitpick?
Okay, okay, uh.
Yeah, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, he asked. Please.
Can we put calendar days or business days and be consistent between the two?
Yes.
All right, now you can go.
Lynn, Lynn hit one of mine, so, uh, thank you, Lynn.
Yeah, sure you did.
Yeah, mine too.
Yeah, cause I get, and this was a little nebulous, I think, uh, under this, the schedule. So it'd be the first, second, third paragraph where it says acknowledgement of a complete or incomplete submission should be made within three working days. My question is, from when? It's not clear.
Receipt of the application.
Correct, that's a good point.
So, so that, that should be added to it, just for, I think, clarification.
Yeah, I agree, that's a good comment.
There will be some other, uh, revisions to both the subdivision and the site plan regulations as they relate to stormwater as well.
Are those the, um, as for, yeah.
Yeah, so, again, Mike and I have had this discussion, but again, not to confuse things, it's try to work at one piece at a time here.
Yeah, and I, I think that's kind of the approach that I envisioned, Mr. Chair, I mean, subject to the board's decision, obviously, is, um. These have been, I think everybody wants to kind of look at these regs and make, make some changes, it's been a long time since they've been comprehensively done, and. I think what we're trying to do with this and then with the, these is just get, get them in front of the board as they're ready to go, and let's get this process started.
Yep, I agree, I, I absolutely agree. Anything else from the board before I hand, hand it over to the chairman of the master plan committee?
I, and if I, I can, just on behalf of, uh, the staff, I, I really appreciate, I think this has been an incredibly productive, uh. Session, and I appreciate everybody's feedback, thank you.
Me too. Mr. Chair.
Excellent, all right, so. I have a, I prepared a three hour presentation. To provide us a comprehensive update on what we've done, um, no, but.
I gotta pee then. Yeah, at home.
No, but really quickly, um, about three weeks ago, the, uh, master plan steering committee kicked off, um, since then, we've had three meetings. Um, it, our first one was, you know, our organizational meeting, elected a chair, elected a, you know, vice chair, you know, secretary. Um, you know, and then, you know, kind of laid the land of, you know, where we want, you know, our, this master plan to kind of evolve. You know, from and then to, um, I think it's really important to kind of, obviously, you know, discuss, um. You know, the differences between twenty twelve and twenty twenty-four, um, the twenty twelve master plan, you know, was. Um, the twenty twelve master plan, you know, was this really, it was a very well-done document. Um, the twenty twenty-four is going to be more action-based. Yeah, I think when, when someone reads this, that, you know, we're, we're gonna, you know, write, you know, immediately, we will see, all right, these are the actions, this is what Lunendary, you know, citizens desire, this is what they want. So it's not gonna be this comprehensive book, it's gonna be an update to, you know, update to that from, from twenty twelve as well as, um, where, um, you know, things have changed, you know, between twenty twelve and twenty twenty-four.
Jeff, I probably would recommend also taking a look at the twenty, uh, oh four plan.
Yes.
So there's, there's some continuity i- i- in them, and you can kind of get the train of thought what was in, in the master plan.
Absolutely.
The twelve or the thirteen one was a little bit different. I think it's more of a academic type of.
Right. Um, and I think, um, in, you know, the twenty, um, yeah, the two thousand and four plan was, was shared with the committee. Um, our esteemed, uh, um, I forget what hat you were wearing that day.
It was all of them.
Our multi hat, uh, town manager, you had the foresight to kind of.
Mike, Mike does everything.
Provide that information to us.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be, uh, I'll be doing the, uh, the, the vacuuming around here before she walks.
But, just like, yeah, definitely to close, we are, we are, we're preparing our, uh, master plan survey that, you know, we're gonna target to all Lunendary citizens. Um, we're also, um, preparing for, you know, events to promote that survey. So what are we gonna do with the survey? Obviously, we're gonna, we're collecting data on, um, community vision, demographics, what the town, you know, sees and, you know, you know, sees, wants, you know, but, you know, the feely type kind of questions. Um, we're really designing this entire process to be very collaborative, and we're, every piece of data, every piece of, um, word that's coming in, you know, as a, I'm a data-centric guy, so that's all important to kind of really kind of provide that comprehensive, you know, view. Um, the other kind of important point, you know, um, with this, you know, of updating, um, we're an evolving town, and within being an evolving town, you know, we need to maintain, you know, with regulations and such. Our master plan shows, you know, you know, shows external, our external partners and, um, that, yeah, we are committed. We're not sitting on a twenty twelve, you know, um, comprehensive plan. Um, you know, we have, we have citizens that are, you know, you're deeply passionate about this. Um, you know, and we're, you're fairly open for business from, you know, an economic development standpoint and from a, um, you know, from a livelihood, you know, standpoint, um, as well as a, you know, cultural and, you know, community pride standpoint. So it's a, it's a really great, um, really great group. Um, you know, Sean's also, Aunt Sean and Lynn are on it. Um, so, you know, we have some really, um, in three weeks, we've made some kind of good work. So I encourage you all to stop by our table at Old Home Day, um, and kind of pin, make, you know, pin where you live in Lunendary, um, and then, you know, be subject to questions by myself and others from the committee. And we might have lollipops, I don't know.
You could also wa- wander around, solicit, tackle people.
Any other, uh, comments?
Yeah, I think.
You should also have to have hats that say master plan on it.
Right.
So I can share with you a comment that was, um, that was actually part of a conversation that I had, um, the other day with a not-so-younger lady who, um, said to me, um, I, I have no idea who she was. I can't wait until, um, you guys get done with this mast- with the master plan. And I said, okay, uh, I'm not on the, I'm not on that committee. And she said, oh, well, anyway, I can't wait until it's done so we can stop all this development. I said, well, actually, that's not what a master plan does. And she just walked away. So.
It's usually the last people who moved in, want the gates closed, no one.
I'm, I'm a sharing person, so I wanted to share that with you.
Uh, just a couple of things on it, you know, when I had started at the beginning of the, this year, um, you know, the, the board had nominated me to chair, and there were two things that I, I had committed to was, was the master plan and, and really starting to look into our, our regulations. Um, I, I wanna say, you know, Jeff has done a phenomenal job, um, as a chair, he's really taken this, he's run with it, he's putting a ton of time into it. Um, I, I, I get enough emails about, I, I get more, like, sometimes I'm thinking I'm getting more master plan emails than I am work emails during the day. So I, I wanna highlight that there has been probably at this point hundreds of volunteer hours that have been put into this master plan already, and we're, we're, we're three, three meetings into it.
Collectively.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, not just you.
It's really.
Um, so, you know, but, but that has all been, you know, with, with Jeff in the forefront of this, really getting everything going and getting everything moving, so thank you very much. Um, you know.
I think we all, we all appreciate it, cause I know master planning is for the biggest undertaking.
Correct.
The town does.
Correct.
It really puts a tremendous workload, and even when eventually gets to the, uh, the planning board also, the planning board becomes more involved.
Correct.
Right.
And, and, you know, just on the importance of the master plan, um, you know, we talk about regular, regulation changes, we talk about the future of Lunendary, you know, how, how do you, how do you come up with some of these, these changes? Well, you, you gotta come up with a plan, you gotta start somewhere, and I think that master plan is that, that start of talking about regulation changes. We don't even know what regulation changes we want, cause we don't have a plan yet. So I think having a plan is, is hugely important, um, and.
You gotta get the public input.
Yeah, and, uh, I just, you know, again, we've got a lot, there's been a lot of time already invested into it. Um, and I, I just wanna thank Jeff for, for the amount of time that he's put in, um, and, and more importantly, dedication to it. Um, it's a heavy lift, it's a heavy lift, and so everybody involved, you know?
Yeah, the staff has been phenomenal. I just, you know, um, you, you know, Mike, um, you know, wearing his twelve hats and, you know, vacuuming and stuff like that. But, no, but like, just the support that we've received, um, you know, Sylvia has been, you know, instrumental, the staff from Southern Hampshire Planning Commission, um, you know, they're, they take our feedback, run with it, craft it, and hopefully, you know, it's all coming back. But, you know, it's only three weeks, so we're still, we're still on the honeymoon period, I'm really sure we're gonna hit some rocks soon.
Can I request that you add a, uh, stop sign chapter?
Right after the.
Come to the meeting.
Be careful.
I think.
It's an infancy, Jeff, so, uh, it, it starts rolling and develops a life of its own, so.
I think one important aspect of that, that Jake alluded to it too, um, great, um, update on what, um, the master plan committee is doing. All the steps that we're gonna take forward in this town should start with a comprehensive gathering of information from the community, and I think part of this master plan process is just an opportunity to get that comprehensive view across all ages, across all residents, new and old. Um, it's the best way to get that information.
Yep.
And so we're, we're doing our best, and it's gonna be valuable for so many things besides this master plan. So I'm glad about that part, and that's one of the first parts, so it's, it's great.
Absolutely.
And for what it's worth, I think we had two of the youngest people ever show up to a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was great.
Yep.
Yes.
That was really cool.
Because one of the focus groups that the, uh, on the twelve, thirteen master plan was with the high schoolers.
Mm-hmm.
And they had some, uh, really good, uh, good input, so that's a good, good resource. And I think we had like five different sessions, you know, for focus groups, you know, you know, stay, stayed throughout the year. And of course, we provided pizza and everything that, uh, brought people, we'd have sixty people, so we'd eat each one, so we thought was decent.
I've talked to people who were part of that, and they were very happy with just getting people to reach out to them. And it's a group that ordinarily does not get involved, so that's, hopefully you can change some of that.
All right, anything else from the board?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Motion, I have to, is there a second?
Second.
So, I have a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Mr.